Councilmember Nick Far.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Wellner.
Here.
Vice Mayor Thayer.
Present.
Mayor Fredericks.
Here.
Um, so we move now to interviews for vacancies on the board. Our interviewee this evening is Lee Fibush, who's applied for Heritage and Arts. Come to the mic and introduce yourself and tell us a little about yourself and your interest in heritage and art.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Liz Fibush. Um, I applied for the Heritage and Arts Commission position back in March and interviewed as well, so I'm back a couple of months later. Um, I'm interested in the role because um, I've lived in Tiburon for about seven years now. Um, I've been interested in the heritage and arts of this community. Um, I have a fine arts degree from NYU and a master's and MBA um, from USF. And most recently, I was doing leading brand and product marketing at a tech company. But prior to that, I have fifteen years of experience in promoting events for nonprofits. Um, throughout Southern California, New York, Northern California. So I'd love to use my talents and services to serve our community better.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council?
Thank you so much for coming and for interviewing. Your background sounds very, very impressive. What is something that you'd like to do on the Heritage and Arts Commission if appointed?
Yes, so um, one way is just to help promote the art artist expositions that we're doing more and how we can incorporate downtown business and small business in Tiburon with our artist events that we're hosting.
And do you have some idea of how to better promote? Is it just more or something different?
Um, one idea that I I shared back in March as well was um, with the upcoming Tiburon Wine Festival, how we can incorporate our local artists more within that festival and bring people through the downtown more um, after the event.
Yeah, thank you. Any further questions? I am seeing none. Thank you. Thank you for applying. Thank you for your interest and stay with us no matter what happens. All right, um, this is the time when I usually ask Lee uh, to give us the information we need about remote participation and um, about open time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If you're on, if you are calling in on Zoom and would like to make a comment during this meeting, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom, which will indicate to me that you would like to make a comment. You can find the raise hand button on your webinar controls bar on the bottom of your Zoom window or smartphone screen. If you're calling in on a phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand.
Thank you. Um, now is the time for open time for comments on items that are not on the agenda. What is the time uh, limit on that?
Three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone in the public like to make a comment on an item that is not on the agenda or a subject that is not on the agenda? We chased one person away. I hope she comes back. Um, there seems to be no public comment for.
Not online as well.
Is there one online? No.
None.
No. All right, we move now to the consent calendar. Is there any public comment on the item on the consent calendar, which is the Marin County Civil Grand Jury Response? On sea level rise. I am seeing no public comment. Uh, would anyone on the council like to pull this item? Seeing none, uh, I'd entertain a motion to approve the response to the grand jury report.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
We we don't have to do roll call, do we? No. All right, we move now to action items and our first action item is appointment to the Heritage and Arts Commission. Would anyone like to make a motion to appoint? Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any public comment on this item? I'm seeing none. Uh, bring it back to council now. Is there any discussion? Is there any motion?
Okay.
Uh, let me just have a a brief discussion. Marketing is is always something that's needed for for town events and for town actions. On the other hand, um, another applicant, Teresa Coleman, has experience making films. Uh, and she has made some award-winning documentaries, which would be um, a new a new and creative addition to what the Heritage and Arts Commission does. Um, so that is what I'm thinking about and I don't have a priority if anybody wants to help. And if not, I'll bite it.
Oh, no, you don't have to bite it. So I just want to say what we always say is that we have an embarrassment of riches. We have so many wonderful applicants uh, for uh, heritage and arts. I did note that our artist laureate is one of the applicants, uh, Richard Rosen. Uh, and um, you know, I I wanted to point that out as well. Um, I probably uh, will uh, uh, su- support uh, him just because of the past work that he's done uh, with the town. Um, but uh, I do want to say that uh, there is a lot of room for everybody to work on the Heritage and Arts Commission. So if you're appointed or not appointed, uh, there's, there's much work to be done. I do think we need better marketing and more events. So I would move that we appoint Richard Rosen.
I'll second that.
I just want to comment if I may. It's genuinely frustrating because we want to, we want to have all of the community-spirited talented people who want to volunteer, get official positions and be appointed. So I I almost feel like we need to create more, more opportu- more positions or something because I feel like we're, this is your second time in the last six months. It's just, it's frustrating. And eventually people will say, well, I'm not going to volunteer again. So I, I'm not sure if we can do anything about that tonight because it's not on the agenda, but I just, uh, I feel we do have a ritual of saying that we have an embarrassment. I mean, we do that and we do, but I wish we, I think we should probably do something about it because I think we're losing talent.
Yeah, I would. So I would like to offer a substitute motion to appoint uh, Liz Fibush. How do we handle this?
We need a second for that and then that gets voted on first if there's a second.
Yeah, I guess I'll second that.
And now we take a vote on that?
Now we take a vote on the substitute motion first.
So we're taking a vote on the substitute motion. Uh, roll call?
Councilmember Nick Far.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Wellner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thayer.
Yes.
Mayor Fredericks.
Yes. Congratulations. You're appointed unanimously. All right.
I'm a little less frustrated now, but we should still do something about the number of people.
We, we do and there's, there are opportunities with heritage and arts to still be involved, so congratulations.
Congratulations and thank you. All right, we move now to the next agenda item, which are discussion items. The first discussion item is Parks and Recreation Master Plan. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, esteemed council members and members of the public. Uh, this evening, WRT will be providing an update to Town Council on work completed to date on the Tiburon Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Uh, as you're all aware, WRT started this work back in April of twenty twenty-three. And at the direction from Town Council and the Post Commission in March of this year, uh, they adjusted their approach in completing the project to include additional meetings, public outreach, and an extended schedule. So this evening, WRT will be presenting a draft plan to Town Council for discussion. And the plan is a preliminary draft. Uh, in some of the areas of the plan, narrative has not yet been provided as focus has been on showing the overall structure of the plan, the framework of this plan. And key recommendations that would apply to the park system as a whole, to the recreation programming and to individual sites that will carry on uh, from tonight to another post-commission meeting, which at that point, uh, they would recommend a final uh, plan to come back to Town Council for adoption uh, this fall. So with that being said, we have Peter Lynch here from WRT, who will provide a presentation this evening for Town Council and the members of the public.
Um, so, so um, I do have a a council question. Um, people don't seem to understand uh, what this process is. They think that we are are approving either priority or all the projects that are proposed. Um, they think this, some people think that this is the last opportunity for input. In fact, it's a complicated process where a priority project will raise to be considered, to be budgeted, to be designed, to be planned. Uh, sometimes there will be an environmental review before it even gets to construction. And at each phase, there is opportunity at some commission and finally at the council to have input. That does not mean this is not an important process. This is an important process. We need and appreciate your input now. And if staff would like to add further qual- uh, uh, information about the roadway from this master plan to actually approving an actual project, um, it would be appreciated.
Mayor Fredericks, when does, when do, will the public have an opportunity to uh, speak on this agenda item? Will it be before the presentation or will it be after the presentation? Okay. Um, thank you.
Hey, I just want to know who Peter Winch is. Are you the consultant for the design firm?
I I'm sorry, uh, we are now in the part of of the project, uh, of the
Yes.
item where um, yeah. The council is asking uh, questions and there will be a staff report. Um, and the person who's giving the report will introduce himself or herself. Please, staff report.
Oh, yeah.
You can go now. I think we'll just kind of turn it over to Mr. Winch to give the presentation.
I'd also like to mention, everyone over here has a name tag, so if you're wondering who they are, it says it right in front of them on the name tag.
Go ahead, Peter.
Alrighty. Good evening, Tiburon, and thank you for having us back. Um, it's a great process. Um, thank you, council and mayor and community members. It's a great to see people out. Um, this is, this plan will only be better with more input, um, more visibility. Um, so we're very, very excited about that. Um, and to those of you listening online, thank you for joining as well. Uh, we are here to provide an update on the progress of the Parks Master Plan, uh, which is a first-time effort for Tiburon to have, to have the opportunity to step back from the day-to-day decisions that the Post Commission and the council makes. Year after year after year, looking at all kinds of great ideas, um, but not typically having a clear way to evaluate the strength of those ideas in the bigger picture. So that's what this plan is about. Nope, I've got this. Yeah. Let's see. Right, perfect. So I'm Peter Winch. Uh, with WRT, we are working with David Ishu, um, and the council and the Post Commission, um, and have been out in public in Tiburon um, many times over the past year. Um, so really getting to know this community. WRT is a planning and urban design and landscape architecture firm in San Francisco. Um, and I do, um, I do some of our work in the park system planning area and that's what we're doing here. So today, we're just going to orient to the process again because it's been a little while. Um, and we'll just at a high level walk through the structure of the master plan, which is still in process, as Mayor Fredericks said. Um, and then we'll have an opportunity for discussion among council, um, and among members of the public. Yeah. There we go. So we started the process in April of twenty twenty-three. Um, we are now in the yellow area. That's the area that is sort of a additional because we came here and we had a lot of ideas and I think it was a lot to take in and we needed more time to process those ideas, more, more public input, um, more input from the Post Commission and from council. So that's what was added, several months of additional just time to process ideas. We are now where that star is on the, on the diagram, so you can see that we're getting close to where we hope we want to be um, to come back to the Post Commission next month. Um, and then Town Council hopefully back here again in October. So we're here to look at a draft plan. Some of you will have seen this because it's been posted on the website, TiburonParks.org, dot com, actually, I think. Um, here we've got the cover showing and it really is a skeleton right now. It's not a, there's nothing finished about it. Um, as you'll see, if you, if you look into it, there's a lot of just blank pages because that content is still being developed. But we wanted the community and decision-makers to be able to weigh in before it gets too developed. Um, here you're seeing the table of contents for that plan. And we'll walk through briefly, um, just the structure of it and then focus on some of the key recommendations in process that are in chapters three, four, five, and six. We're going to actually skip chapter two. Chapter two um, is really about what we learned about this place through the analysis that was done, conducted for this process. Um, we've presented that material in the past, um, and so it's all available on the website and anyone is welcome to go back and look at at any of our past presentations, but we want to make sure to focus on what's new to make sure we get good feedback. So I'm going to start um, with the executive summary and actually because the executive summary kind of takes in the key points of the whole plan. Um, I'm going to pause after that and see if council wants to maybe just take the discussion at that time or whether we want to continue. So the executive summary um, gives the orientation to this master planning process, what it's about, um, the timeline, as I have just now done. Um, and some context, what are the plans that preceded? What are the other, other plans and projects that need to be taken into consideration as we look at this um, parks and recreation system? Um, and then it summarizes what we're calling a decision-making framework. And the purpose of the decision-making framework, this is a, this is a sort of a, a shift since we last came. And it was, it was at council's guidance to step back from some of the specifics of recommended projects and be explicit and transparent about what the values are and what the logic is behind those recommendations. So this plan is now structured or intended to be structured to show transparently what that logic is and what those values are. So this first slide is just summarizing what the, what the plan intends in terms of a decision-making framework. And this decision-making framework should guide council and the Post Commission and the thinking in the community, I think. It's not a, it's not going to be the only thing you're thinking about, but if you have something to fall back on, a foundation, that's going to be really important. Um, so the first element, well, let's say that there are four elements to the framework. Why, what, where, and how. We all know these words. Why is represented by the guiding principles in the plan. And these guiding principles are growing out of what we've heard from the community during this planning process. So the first part of this decision-making framework should be, is the proposal at hand? Because over the next fifteen years or so, as this plan is, is implemented, um, there will be specific things to think about and consider in terms of changes to the parks and recreation system. So is that proposal consistent with the guiding principles established in the plan? That's a first question. And then we move on to what? So what are the kind of improvements that we're talking about? So first of all, we're going to be talking about recreation amenities and recreation programs. It's kind of at the heart of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So are those programs or amenities priorities as defined through this community engagement process that we've done this year? And we understand that priorities change and evolve. So as this plan gets older, those priorities may start to feel a little bit older, but hopefully we've done a good, strong, robust process and those priorities are going to feel pretty lasting. The next question is where? So if we thought about what are the kind of improvements we want to make to the park system? The next question is, well, where do they belong? What, what kinds of park improvements are appropriate and what kind of locations? Tiburon is a very varied uh, landscape and environment and it has all kinds of different kinds of places. It's a very unconventional kind of a park system. Um, so it really matters where something goes. You can't just plot anything down at any location. So this where question is about, would that proposed improvement be in an appropriate location based on certain characteristics that we looked at? Access, topography, vegetation, the sensitivity of vegetation, the susceptibility to hazards. So we want to think about those things as we think about placing, placing new amenities or doing other kinds of improvements to parks. And then the last uh, piece of this framework is how, um, costs and funding. Um, everything costs money, as we all know, um, and not just to build, but to maintain over time. And so this plan is providing a foundation for what those rough order of magnitude costs are. We won't know exactly because every project is unique. Um, once you, once it goes into a design stage, um, at some year in the future, the actual costs are going to be different, but we do our best to understand what the costs are today. So we provide a foundation for all of the sort of main recreation considerations that are in this plan, um, both to build and then to maintain over time. Um, and then we also look at funding sources. Um, and this chapter also is going to consider some what we're calling aspirational projects, some things that the town doesn't have today, um, that are potential community priorities, but would be really more complicated, bigger ticket improvements. So breaking that down now one by one, first is the why, the guiding principles. And we have on this slide, the five guiding principles in draft form that we've developed through the community engagement process. And I'm not going to go through all of the findings of the community engagement process here because we've done that and it's, it's, it's really rich, it's really good material, um, happy to take questions on it. Um, this is where we've come out, out of that process, understanding what the, what the really key opportunities are. So first is around park experience and the importance of preserving the natural beauty and tranquility of Tiburon's parks and open spaces while also enhancing park experience. The second uh, guiding principle is about recreation amenities and improvements. And here the guiding principle is to use this transparent systematic framework to consider potential recreation amenities and park improvements as they come, um, understanding what the community priorities are today. Uh, the third principle is around recreation programming. And this is really focused on, this recognizes, this principle recognizes that actually in Tiburon, recreation programming isn't provided directly by the town, it's provided by the ranch. Some of you guys might know the ranch and the programs that's, that it offers. Jessica's here in the audience and um, and so here we have a representative of the ranch and all the great things that they do. It is a joint venture with Tiburon, so there is some overlap, um, an opportunity for, for us to be aligned so that the spaces that we are planning for are also aligned with the kind of programming that we're going to do. We also heard from community members that it's important to be connected to other recreation providers in this region, um, so that people are working together well. The fourth principle is about access and safety. Um, and we heard a lot about, a lot of concern about the feeling of safety, particularly on the, on the old rail trail between pedestrians and bikes. So we recognize that as a fundamental safety issue, but also access to the park, just issues of pedestrians and cyclists in particular, being able to access arc, arcs and recreation spaces safely in Tiburon. Um, definitely came out as a, as a, as a, as an issue. And so a principle of the plan is to create safe, inclusive, and attractive access. This also actually has to do with informational access. Um, people told us in a lot of different ways that there's an absence of maps, of signage, of information online, of ways for people to understand what's available today. And then the fifth principle is around environment and sustainability. And this is about recognizing that parks and open spaces also can provide other benefits to the community. Now I'm on to the what. Um, this is, um, this is uh, here summarizing what we heard were community priorities in the area of recreation amenities and programs. So um, there are, there is really a long list of, of ideas that were, that were um, shared with the community and we received input. And a lot of them had a lot of passionate um, advocates. Um, some of them less so, some of them had maybe a small group of passionate advocates, some may have a broad-based appeal. This is our best sense of what the communities are, the community priorities are overall. So we, we heard a lot about the importance of playgrounds. We heard a lot about kayak and SUP launch. We heard clearly that multi-use trails are valuable in this community. And I just, every time I come here, it's so clear when I'm driving down Tiburon Boulevard, how beloved and how well-used the old rail trail is. Uh, we heard the, we heard a lot about swimming, um, pickleball courts. I see, I see, I think I saw a shirt in the audience. Um, uh, open space and conservation areas, tennis courts, a community center, picnic areas and shelters, and off-leash dog area. In terms of recreation programming, we heard about a lot of interest in community special events, cultural enrichment programs, senior programs, adult fitness and wellness, um, exercise classes for all ages and activities for teens, things for teenagers to do besides hang out, besides behind CVS. Um, the third, am I on three or four? I think I'm on three. The third of these, the third leg of this table is where? So where should, where should things, where should we consi- we consider what kinds of changes to our park system? And we've, this is a new approach. We, this is new since we were last in this room. Um, and it is responsive to what we heard from council to be able to have a, again, transparent way of making decisions um, that isn't that isn't uh, being absolutely literal about what should go where, but is creating some room for things to be considered. So here we have a spectrum of, we're kind of, these are kind of like zones. If you think about land use planning and zones that allow different kinds of uses, um, this is kind of like that, except it doesn't have that same kind of, it's not a regulatory thing. It's more of a guidance policy level um, idea. But we're going from the active and recreational end of the spectrum to the ecological protection end of the spectrum. And there's, you know, some variety and range in between. So you're going to see these zones and we can talk about them more as we get into it. And then fourth is how, um, and as I mentioned, the plan provides rough order of magnitude costs of building and maintaining, um, the kinds of recreation improvements that, that we heard about and that we studied. Um, it also looks at relevant funding sources for Tiburon. So I'll stop there, I think, for a moment and pause, um, see if we want to just go straight to council discussion because I don't want to hear my voice too much, um, or if you want me to continue.
Actually, I would like you to continue and then I would love to hear it from the public before we have council discussion. Uh, if that's okay with our mayor and everyone else on council.
Yeah, I, I do have a comment at this point, though. Um, and that is, uh, I want to congratulate you for really listening to the comments that we gave you last time. I feel much better about this report. I feel very good about it. Um, there's still more to do, but uh, the zoning approach is extremely helpful. And I feel like this report pays a lot more attention to, instead of building everything, proposing the things that you heard most as being the things to be emphasized. So I'm very eager to hear you go through the rest of it, but um, nice job.
Yeah, I'll, I also have a comment. I would, I would echo Councilmember Wellner's sentiment. I think last time both he and I were on the same page around a lot of the, a lot of the changes and I thank you for incorporating those, um, those changes. Um, I, I think also, you know, I was probably on the other side of the fence around the zoning piece, but I think seeing it in this forum makes a, makes a little more sense. Um, so I, I've appreciated, I think, um, and come around, I think, to, to some of the ideas that, that have come up through this process. So thank you for making those changes, especially in the first portion of it's in, in, in significantly improved space.
And then let, let me respond uh, to uh, Vice Mayor Thayer's request. I, I think we should go ahead and have the council discussion first, so the public has a chance to respond to what the council has to say. Are there any further discussions on this?
Um, thanks. So I just want to make one um, quick comment and I, I concur with my fellow um, council members that you're on.
you're on the right track and you're doing, this is, this is the direction that I, I want and asked for earlier. But I would, I hope that you flesh out the executive summary fairly considerably because I, and I apologize to the, to you and to the public for not recognizing that this was a deficiency before we came to this juncture. But I think that the executive summary, if it were more thoroughly articulated, would have helped the public understand where we are and what this document is coming into tonight. And in particular, as you're fleshing it out, it might be helpful. And I'm not sure how you do this without sounding too negative. But you could, you know, part of the reason we did this is because we had an idea and it was probably several, but I'm just remembering one that came to us. And, you know, people said, we need this. And it sounds like a great idea, but if you just sort of take every idea ad hoc, it's, you end up with a mishmash. And so in the executive summary, it might be instructive to show how in Tiburon in particular, the lack of planning, not necessarily with respect to recreation leads to some unconventional outcomes that you might reverse if you did plan adequately. And I'm thinking sidewalks around town are atrocious and a complete mishmash, right? There's no consistency. Everyone talks about how, you know, Blackies area is so beautiful. But if you were planning it, you would not put a sewage pumping station right in the middle of it. So we have a history of poor planning. This document would, is intended to get us in front of the future of planning by recognizing how we should plan more thoughtfully. So I hope that the executive summary, as you develop it, recognizes that, explains that, and even feel free to use some highlights that may not look, previous planning efforts is looking so good, but that's my two cents.
And I just wanted to add, since we're commenting that I do actually like the zone approach, which was, which was council member Wellner and, and council member Ryan, Ryan's idea. I, I think it's also important, I want to echo the comments about the executive summary. That is the roadmap of how people will view the document. I also want to commend you on the outreach. There has been a lot more outreach since you last came. I want to commend parents for parks and rec because you guys are awesome. So yeah. And I'm fine whether we do the public comment before or after, but I probably will have comments after. So it's up to our mayor, how she'd like to do this.
Yeah, I, I think I would also add, you know, when we think about the priorities for this document, you know, we're, we're not done yet, right? But, but where, how did we get here to this point? And so I think it's, it's worth, because a lot of folks in town and we get this, this feedback via email and, and, and I think one thing that's really important for everyone here to understand is, is I think all of us read every email that comes in. We, we try to respond to what we can. We do take your feedback to heart. And that's why when we, when originally when I had planned this, this with Angela McInerney, when I was a post commissioner, one of the important things we put in the RFP was just a massive amount of community engagement. So what came before this? You all got a, a letter in the mail with a survey and there was an opportunity to also fill out a digital version of that survey in the mail. So there were, there was a lot of opportunity for public in, input. We had pop-ups and, and I think it was probably more engagement, I think than we've had in any other, other survey or, or, you know, or, or town effort to collect information from town residents. And so I think that's really where I, I think, you know, not to, to pat us, pat a, you know, the, the people involved on the back, but I think, I think our goal was really to get everyone here who's here and everyone who is a Tiburon resident to, to have their input so that we can make sure that, to, to council member Ryan's point, that we're planning it the right way for the future. Cause I think there are, you know, again, also the council member Ryan's point. There are a lot of things that, that we, you know, we, those of us that live in Tiburon probably would have done a little bit differently if we had, we had known that, you know, we were going to be in this situation. So yeah, thank you again. Thank you to everyone who, who, who filled out surveys and provided input. And I'm, I'm really glad that we have just the dearth of input that we, we had to get to this, this place here.
And I, and I would like to incorporate the documents, just the remarks just made. And especially the remark about somewhere in the executive summary or the introduction, explain what the process is, where the document is in the process of constructing a particular project. Where in the process it is, yes. Okay. Would you like to continue your presentation?
Yeah, sure. Thank you for those.
So I have a question. How far do we want to go into the presentation? Cause it's a pretty lengthy presentation and I know a lot of, a lot of people here. You know, may, may have to get home for bedtime and, you know, and that sort of thing. So I, I do want to make sure that for all the, especially all the parents with young kids that we're being, you know, as, as supportive as we can in terms of, of wanting to hear their feedback.
All right. So why, why don't I ask you this? If we take public comment now, we'll be taking it from you before you hear what the council has to say, but you'll have an opportunity to go online and look at it and respond at that time. So is it okay to just take your comments now before you hear the?
Well, I, we have to, there, there has to be some completion of the report, right? I mean, how long, Peter, how, how long is the presentation that you have?
You know, I probably could do it in 10 minutes.
Does that work?
I think, I think we want to be a light, I think we want to take a light touch to it.
Yeah, I think finish the presentation.
So that goes to.
For those who have a short timeline, does that work? Okay.
And that goes to Vice Mayor Thayer's suggestion that we take comment before council comments. So that'll give you the time you need and you can beat us up later.
And you can get home to the kids.
Okay. 10 minutes. Go for it.
So what I want to do with this time is just orient people to the structure of the document and where the content is, what sort of, how is all put together? And not get into the details of the content, because I think I did that. The key ideas I shared in the, in the executive summary. So I think, I think that's, that's really a takeaway in that area, but, but it's still helpful to understand how the document is put together and all the work that was, that, that, that goes into it and feeds it. So the second chapter, which follows the executive summary is called Place Parks and Programs. And this chapter documents in summary form, what we learned through our process. And it includes a summary of demographics and recreation trends. So thinking about national and regional recreation trends and how those figure into, into Tiburon and the likely participation in sports in recreation, different kinds of recreation by Tiburon residents. It looks at the park system, parks and open space system itself, quantifying how many acres we have of different types, mapping the system, thinking about access and walksheds and environmental conditions and so on. It looks at those parks and open spaces in more detail because we went and visited all those sites and we documented what we understood to be things that were working well and things that may be needed improvement. So those also hopefully feed the recommendations that we make in the plan. It also assesses four of the building facilities in the park system. Most importantly, the ranch, but also the three restrooms in the parks. And it looks at, at recreation programming. It takes a sort of bigger picture view of what are the recreation programs offered? How well do they serve people of different ages? What are the opportunities for change in the, in the programming world? And it looks then at other recreation providers, not just the ranch, but a little bit of a survey of what, what's being offered by others. Let me go back now here to chapter three. So chapter three is where we document what we learned from the community through the community engagement process. And you've heard a little bit, little bit about that tonight. But first it will summarize what the community engagement activities were throughout the process. There were some really fun things that we did. You see in this photograph, one of our pop-ups out at the classic car show last June. We were out there. We were, we were at Friday night on Main, two years in a row. We had a workshop here. We had a walking tour workshop in, in Richardson Bay Lineal Park and other engagement activities. And some of you may have submitted comments through the web portal. We've gotten, I think over a hundred. We've been cataloging each of those comments as they come in and paying attention to those as well. So we're documenting in this chapter what we did. And then what we learned through that process. So what were the, what were the emerging themes in terms of issues that people talked about? Vision, ideas of how the park system should be in the future. And specific recreation program and amenity priorities. And from that, we then start shifting in this chapter into, this is where we define those guiding principles. And each one of those five guiding principles that I showed earlier actually has a set of sort of sub recommendations that are a little bit lower in, a little bit less universal and more specific. And then it's also where we document a prioritized list of recreation amenities and recreation programs. So all of that is in chapter three. Chapter four, so chapter three is the why and the what actually, chapter four becomes the where. And this is where we talk about conditions of the site characteristics, the site conditions that we want to take into account when we think about what kinds of changes to make to the parks and open spaces. So we summarize in this chapter issues of access and topography and slope and vegetation and so on. And then we introduce this concept for site character areas. That's the zones that we, that we showed earlier. And then we map those. So those zones are the, are actually mapped on the town of Tiburon. And we actually have a detail of how those zones look at Richardson Bay Lineal Park, because that's the most complex and largest park space in this community. This is the table in that, in that chapter that summarizes each of the six park character areas from most active to most ecologically sensitive. And this map shows how those character areas are mapped across the system. And I know it's hard to see at the scale. The document is available on the website. So you can take a look in more detail. But I think it's important to point out, a lot of the parks and open space assets that we have are, you know, they're, they're basically open spaces. They're basically passive open spaces that we would maintain and manage for their natural character. There's a relatively small amount of land that is actually managed and has opportunities for recreational activity. Then the chapter also is going to identify specific recreation improvements that, that are recommended, that come out of that engagement and that analysis process. We think that these are things that, that there was broad consensus around. So it stops short of making specific recommendations for recreation amenities and where they should go. But it does identify, for example, at a park like Cypress Hollow, that there is play equipment that is old and needs to be replaced or, or upgraded. There's lawn that is in poor shape that needs to be restored and so on. And we look at also specific recommendations for the open space and trail system, including providing amenities at key trailheads and pursuing opportunities to connect trails where they're right now are missing those connections. And maybe the most interesting opportunity there is how can we better connect downtown with the Tiburon Ridge? And the ridge to the bay, just, just some, some cool opportunities to make Tiburon a complete open space and trail network. Chapter five then is where we document the rough order of magnitude cost estimates for capital improvements by recreation amenities. So all of those recreational amenities that were considered in the previous chapters in terms of which ones are community priorities are now considered in terms of their rough order of magnitude cost. We also look at typical costs for maintaining parks of different sizes and trails, since those are the kinds of spaces that Tiburon needs to maintain day in, day out. And this is also the chapter where we document a whole range of potential sources of funding that can be used for parks and recreation and which ones are most relevant for Tiburon. And then chapter six is the decision-making framework where we kind of pull all those together. The why, the what, the how and the where. And we have, we're, we're able to see all of the potential recreation amenities that Tiburon might consider in terms of how they sort of stack up in each of those categories. And it should be helpful to everyone to understand, you know, if a kayak SUP launch, for example, is a very high priority. What are actually, where is there actually a location where it could go? What kind of cost are we talking about? So that we can weigh these different priorities, not just in terms of their community prioritization, but also in terms of their sort of actionability. And then this chapter will also document the specific site improvement recommendations that we have and classify those by what we're calling an improvement tier. And those improvement tiers are on the one hand, or on the sort of, on the most basic level, they are necessary improvements to keep parks updated. That's a tier A kind of improvement. There's tier B improvements, which may be more strategic changes, like maybe you'd want to replace one recreation element with another, but otherwise the park would stay the same. And then C might be, let's say a more visionary change, something that would more significantly alter the way a park space is today. So I think I'll leave it there and turn it back over to council.
I, I would just like to make sort of a broad comment and I don't, I don't know if it fits in, into anything. One of the things that I thought was important was to look at collateral impacts of, of building a particular project. And I know you, you looked at noise, but, but there are all, there are other kinds of things like will infrastructure in a place like Blackies pasture, which was formerly a marsh. How will that impact any sea level rise mitigation broader projects that we will be looking at? Another collateral impact is just parking and traffic demand. Those are just examples of sort of collateral impacts. If that was taken into account more explicitly, that'd be great. In some cases, the projects have been studied in the past. A kayak launch has, has been looked at. If that information is helpful, maybe it can be incorporated when the actual project comes to, to be considered. And then the other note I made is, is that there be an explicit definition, maybe with some citation to some kind of authority of what passive use is. I know that you did mention it's using the particular site, leaving the landscape as it is intact. And if that is the definition, that's, that's fine. There are other definitions and it's sometimes a source of controversy. Those are my comments. Someone else? Yes, joke.
I, I think those are extremely well taken. The, the particularly about the different impacts of, of selecting different sites. I have one comment. It may sound nitpicky, but I don't think it is, which is in the beginning, when you talk about the where, you talk about access and some other issues. I think part of the where also is in addition to what is, you know, the topography and the access, there is also proximity to neighborhoods in terms of noise. So I would actually make that explicit in some of those early comments about location because there's both the location with respect to getting to the site and whether the site's suitable. But there's also location with respect to impact on neighbors. So it's just an important point, thing to point out. That's all I have to say at this point. I think once we hear from public, we can talk about more specific elements of what's being proposed.
Are there any further comments at this time?
Yeah, I, I would also like to mention that I think, I think part of the, the process, when we, we looked at each of these parks, it was to dig into, you know, is there, when, when the town originally purchased the park or when the town originally, you know, started building the park, what was its originally intended use? Is there any documentation to support one, you know, whether it's a deeded type of activity or whether there's a legally restricted activity. That was something I thought that WRT and, and town staff spent a lot of time digging through. You know, what is black, the original paperwork for Blackies pasture? Like what does it say it's for? And there's a lot of sort of oral history of Tiburon, which is great because I think, I think the, the people who have been here for a long time, sometimes 40, 50, 60 years, who are part of the process in, in getting information and continue to be part of the process, which is, which is fantastic because it lets us understand sort of where, where we've come from and, and hopefully, you know, work together on where we're going to go. But, but I think it's also important that the public understands that a lot of work was done, painstaking work to understand. You know, what is each of these parks' original intended purpose? What does it say on the deed to the park if we can find it? And, and who owns it? Is it town owned? Like, you know, all that, all that work was done to get to where we are right now. So I wanted to just applaud town staff and WRT for, for spending the time doing all that as well.
Any further comments? Yes, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to echo, echo those comments and I know that.
Yeah, I just I just wanted to echo echo those comments. And I know that Isaac, when you were on Parks, Open Space and Trails, you did a ton of work and you were talking about how this came to be. I was also on Parks, Open Space and Trails, but really it was Angela McInerney who went through, and she's a Parks and Rec Commissioner, who went through and did a ton of historical research to try to get this off the ground. And Isaac and Angela really started started the effort and our own town council as well. All of my colleagues talked about it because what we didn't like was that as town council members, we were approving projects without a framework. And when you look at our parks and you look at all of the great ideas that we've heard for our parks, you know, we we want to have a framework so that we can include the best things so that we can hear from the community and know really what the community wants, rather than just getting one-off proposals and not knowing if our community wants them. So I want to really commend my fellow council member, Isaac Nikfar and Angela McInerney, who I don't see here, but you should get to know her if you don't. And also my counsel because we all had a part in making sure that there was a planning effort.
So I gather that concludes the presentation. And you may think that concludes our discussion, but it looks like it doesn't.
Sorry, I have one thing I want to add. And this is actually kind of a question for the rest of council. So one of the things that I've asked for, and I think you've reflected it. It stands up pretty well in the document is talking about how the document should also provide a framework for things that have not even been considered by the public, but you know, twenty years from now might come up when people want to have badminton tournaments downtown because it's the new hot sport. And I traded emails with Peter and I appreciate, you know, he he sort of got me in the right place in terms of like, I think the document works that way, but I just want to ask ask my fellow council members to think about the document, think about different things that are not in the idea list. Do you think the document holds up and addresses those potential ideas well enough going forward? And if not, then we should provide guidance to to WRT as to how to flesh it out that way.
I I had a similar thought, Councilmember Ryan, and and I think we there are ways we can solve for this in the in the future. And I think maybe put some comments in the doc around. You know, here's especially the parts around here. Here's how we got here. And what are some ways to kind of refresh, maybe refresh the survey, refresh the pop-ups? I think I think all of us were really excited about how much community engagement we've gotten through this process. And I think that's the right model for this moving forward. So if if there's, you know, the the census used to be every ten years. And maybe there's maybe there's something like, you know, let's relook at parks every five years or every ten years. Because if you look at the population of Tiburon, twenty-five, thirty years ago, it wasn't that much smaller than it is right now. It's five hundred people smaller. But the way it looked was a lot different. And so I think, you know, as we're looking at housing increases and as we're looking at at turnover and 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 new population, also an aging in place population, and we're planning for this diversity of age also. It's it's important that if things change that we have a a mechanism to kind of refresh that.
Okay, so I'm going to suggest that we may not have any further public comment in the future if we don't let the public comment now.
We are very chatty today.
So introduce yourself and please share your comments.
We have three minutes, is that right?
Yes.
Hi, I'm a mother, resident and voter in Tiburon. I want to thank you for your leadership and for giving residents numerous opportunities to weigh in over the past year on the Parks and Rec Master Plan. The master planning process has provided a wonderful opportunity for residents to think about what they value and what they see in our Parks and Rec system. I am part of a grassroots group in Tiburon called Parents for Parks and Rec. You might have seen our T-shirts. We are a collection of parents and supporters who care about creating and maintaining recreational spaces in Tiburon that are inclusive and inspiring, and we have come together because of this master plan process. Our stance is this, Tiburon is a multi-generational community, yet the needs of our kids, teens and families are not being adequately met. There is a lack of accessible, up-to-date and well-maintained public park spaces where people can gather, play and hang out, spaces where people can have fun. Over the past ten months, many of us have spent countless hours convening, writing letters and attending meetings to ensure that town leaders know how we feel. We formally came together as a group earlier this year. And in July, we publicly launched an online petition to help increase awareness of the master plan and also to gather support for family-friendly ideas. As of tonight, I'm happy to report we have two hundred and forty-five local residents who have signed our petition. Many of those signatures represents parents who want to attend council meetings but can't due to family responsibilities. For example, many are at home right now with their kids preparing for the first day of school tomorrow. Our petition outlines several ideas for Tiburon's Parks and Rec system that we feel would significantly benefit children and teens, but also residents of all ages. Our ideas include such things as updating neighborhood parks, creating an inclusive and nature-based playscape, adding teen amenities in a swimming pool. I pronounce here of our petition if you'd like to see the full list. I'm sure I don't need to say this, but the reason we are advocating for these amenities is because, one, kids often do not have a voice in the political process. And two, because we care about the health of our children and the health of our community. Access to parks and recreation is critical to a child's development at all stages, and this access has become even more critical due to the surging mental health crisis among young people that's having devastating effects. We need to provide an environment where kids can get off their tablets and phones, get outside to socialize and play. In a broader sense, vibrant park spaces can benefit the entire community. Well-maintained parks offer an array of environmental, economic and social benefits. We know that many family-friendly amenities are available through private clubs in Tiburon and in parks in other towns in Marin. From an access and equity standpoint, we feel that these offerings should be available in the public spaces in our own community. We also feel that by bolstering park amenities in Tiburon, car traffic could possibly be reduced as families won't be forced to drive to other areas to meet some of their basic recreational needs. Counsel, as you move toward adopting the master plan, we hope you will take our needs and wishes and the needs of our children to heart. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Hello, thank you.
Hello, my name is Beth Mix and I've been a resident of Tiburon for over six years. I own a home in Old Town Tiburon, right down the street, and I have two young children with my husband. I'm really excited to be here. Thank you, Jenna. It's been great to meet, you know, the huge group of Parents for Parks and Rec. As Jenna mentioned, we have actually two hundred and forty-six signees on our petition tonight. We got one more recently a couple of minutes ago. And over ninety of us are Tiburon with a few Belvidere residents. I actually know a lot of the signees in particular. I actually created the petition. I can see the list. It's predominantly Tiburon and Belvidere. So I just wanted to answer that upfront in case anyone was wondering. I am here specifically to just add more color around our seven ideas that everyone's supporting at least one or more when they signed our petition. I've created a handout with images that I would love for you to open as I walk through. I was not allowed to extend a presentation or show this, so I printed it as a creative solution. First, our immediate needs. So we we would like and I do have to say, all of our ideas would like to complement Tiburon's beauty and peacefulness that we all love. Families love that as well. So I I want to make sure that when people react negatively to new ideas, we are letting you know that these ideas are meant to complement that. So first of all, a nature-based playground around the Blackies pasture. This could go other places, but there's a picture here. When I was with my children, I could see a bunch of camps of two- to four-year-olds just sitting in tick grass, sitting there with nothing to do by the Blackies statue. There's plenty to do on the beach, but when you go to that big area of grass, there's absolutely nothing to do. And when I walk by the Shapiro Bridge, I'm inspired because he wants recreation for families. I think there's a lot that you could do there without with complimenting things like a nature-based playground. Take Tunnel Tops Park, for an example. There's a lot of people here that have brought up to me that that's what they would like. But we could even do something simpler like hammocks or little wooden beams to climb or wooden seesaws. Even Sausalito deserves a big shout out. They turned a homeless encampment into the most beautiful park. I go there a lot and it is used by all different ages. I was recently in Maui and there's all these little shaded areas where you can just sit and eat lunch and look out at views and enjoy yourselves. Cypress Hollow Park, you all might not be there. I go there quite a bit. There are huge gaps. You have one child jumping off on one side, another child jumping off on the other. I'm not allowed to build my deck in Tiburon without being a certain spacing. Why is a park have su- super big spaces where a child can just jump off and slide through? That park, we would love for it to be upgraded for toddlers, specifically zero to four-year-olds. Also, when people are there with their dogs, it would be nice if there was some sort of like proactive spacing. And you can look at my slides as well, but they're here for you. I did ask for five minutes, but I got asked to not.
I was gonna ask that we extend her time. I I think we should let her finish. Let's just, let's just.
We would actually all like three minutes, so I'm happy to move on to the next person.
Actually, could could we just give her five minutes to go through the slides? You know, just because she wasn't able to give it to us.
Okay, I'm gonna jump in. And I will say to specifically the person that's asking, we did ask for permission, so I did ask ahead of time. All right, so Cypress Hollow, there's big gaps. We would love this to be a more toddler-friendly playground. There's a really great example locally in K Park in Mill Valley, where it's very clearly the dog park, the kid park. There's also a bigger kid in a toddler park. Belair Mini Park. I took my two-year-old there and she goes, where's the park? It literally looks like a dump. There's dog poop everywhere. There's a huge gap of like a I don't even know what's called a drain. A child could slip through there. I think what I've heard is that people just want flat grass and native plants. They just want to be able to have a place for all generations to get together in some shade and tables. No one's looking to make noise. No one's trying to ruffle feathers. Then secondly, biking pedestrian safety. San Francisco and Los Gatos have, I have visuals. They have signage. They have things out there to help people, you know, separate e-bikers from regular bikers or walkers. Specifically with a toddler, you just don't want your toddler to get clobbered. Teen amenities, we had people respond to our next door post that they're just happy teens are included. This is probably the easiest group you could appease. They just want something, you know, they just want coffee and boba and a place to sit and study. As for the pool, this is very complicated. I have a chart here exploring all of the other local areas that I personally have been to over the last four years with my children. There is no affordable, flexible family drop-ins in the area, and I also would prefer not to have to drive down Tiburon Boulevard. They're also very crowded and expensive. I don't know if anyone knows this, but TPC is now at least twenty-eight K in a five-year waitlist. That's unreasonable. The kayak sup launch, there's no drop-in downtown, but there's drop-ins in other areas, so we should be inspired by Sausalito and other places like San Rafael. That's it. Thank you so much for letting me expend my time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chelsea Young and I am a mom of three boys living in the Bel Air neighborhood. My home actually backs up to the field. And so me and my sons are out there a lot so that we can practice their different sports. And it really is a beautiful space. I love the open space character, but it definitely, in my opinion, I agree with Beth, needs sprucing up. And I say that because when I'm out there, we never see other kids out there. Maybe it's just my bad timing, but I feel like there's just not a lot to draw them there. I mean, it's a great space, but there's a lot of things that I would say are deterrents for them to use the space. So I'm really just hoping that we can add some small upgrades to Bel Air Park, such as native plants. I've been a big advocate for that, which I think would require some drip irrigation, not full-on sprinklers that would waste a lot of water, just very, you know, water-conscious drip irrigation. Better maintenance of the grass that is there, filling in the divots that are, you know, a hazard for young kids running around and older adults trying to navigate it. And maybe small garbage cans for dog poop because the dog poop is an issue. So basically, I agree with WRT's recommendations to not change the character of the park, but to make it more usable. We don't want to make it a destination park, just more usable for people in our Bel Air neighborhood. And as Jenna mentioned, there's a teen mental health crisis. I'll also add biodiversity crisis, loneliness epidemic, according to the Surgeon General, and the climate crisis. And so like theoretically, our little park kind of could address all of those things if we put in a small investment, could address it in a small way. I'm also curious, and I have written the town council, and I did get a response at one point from Mayor Fredericks, which I appreciated about whether the park could be used to mitigate flooding in our neighborhood because that's another of my big concerns, living in the flats in Bel Air. We would have to obviously think creatively and consult with an engineer, but that would be great for our neighborhood. And then finally, whatever is done in Bel Air, I don't think it would be expensive. There are various foundations that promote biodiversity, et cetera. I can name a couple. I'd be happy to spearhead the effort to work with them to get plans. You know, I could use the Cub Scouts to plant the plants because I work with the Cub Scouts. So whatever, you know, whatever works, but I think we could bring down the cost, but we'd need some commitment and funding from the town to make it work. And I'll stop there because I'm out of time. Thank you so much.
Hi, thank you so much, council members. It's spoken with most of you over the years, and I really thank you for your leadership on this plan and thank you to the consultants. I know I've spoken with you over the past year. So I hear Mayor Fredericks on what this meeting is and what it's not. This is a plan. It's got some very beautiful ideas, but I hope that it's neither gospel nor quicksand stopping us from moving forward. This was a survey. It's a great survey, a small survey though, and initially lacked things even like playgrounds in the initial outreach. I appreciate that you adjusted that when you found that out from the community and heard that that mattered to us. I really ask you with this plan to hear and listen to the voices of families who are by nature underrepresented in this process. Here tonight at dinner and bedtime, the night before the first night of schools, many of us left crying children behind as we came not to have our voices heard here. I'm a resident of Tiburon for more approaching a decade, the parent of three young children. And in our town here, it has become clear that our community cares about and invests in our children, the library, the schools. We have some of the most incredible natural beauty that the area has to offer. And we have put in tremendous efforts to preserve our open spaces, yet it is also clear to me and to so many here tonight that we have not lived up to our promise in making the space and outdoor opportunities in Tiburon that actually usable and safe for children, youth and families. We have no map, online or not. We have two small playgrounds, one difficult to access, another without a bathroom and necessity for small children, and neither with updated, safe, accessible play equipment. We do not keep up with basic safety maintenance on some of our town properties. I meant to bring a picture of the Bel Air Mini Park taken earlier this summer when my one-year-old tripped in a hidden divot and face planted, and I nearly twisted an ankle myself simply trying to walk through. I have been involved with the efforts of Parents for Park and Rec. And looking around at other communities in Marin, I see time and time again, the examples of wonderful outdoor spaces that we could imitate, mimic and adopt here. As a mental health professional working with teens, I must urge you to consider the positive impact that you could have on the children and youth of our town and as well as physical health and mental health with these efforts. So we are not talking about changes that are dramatically changing the nature of what we look at as a town. We are asking for modest changes that would not cost us, that would make spaces safer and better for families. We need upgrades to the Bel Air Mini Park, to the field, as so many in my neighborhood call us, keeping it a critical use as a watershed and gathering place, but make it baseline safe. We need grading, we need mowing, we need no ticks, we need a permeable walking path, we need a trash can, a water fountain, a picnic table. We need investment broadly in playground infrastructure, like a nature-based playscape and picnic area at Blackies pasture, somewhere close to parking, where families can go with young children. Within a few years, I would love to see teen amenities, a pump track, sand value volleyball, et cetera, to see where students can go and get together. A community pool, recognizing the limited usability of public options and swim lessons, a kayak or sup launch to allow us to utilize recreation on our amazing Richardson Bay. Over the years, I have heard people decry change or ask that any amenities be done elsewhere, but this is our town. This is our community. There is no elsewhere. This is our children and this is our future. I urge you, I beg you, to think about what it means for children to be able to use outside childhood, to be able to run and play rather than be on screens, and for teens to have a place to meet up and engage in recreation rather than loitering or vaping behind the CVS. This master planning process provides us, provides you with the opportunity to allocate intention and budget towards things that will make a difference in Tiburon's future, and I ask you to please do so.
Is there some consensus that that the plan that we're working on, the master plan, covers the needs that you feel need to be fed? Yes. Okay, because if there isn't, as you talk, it'd be useful to hear what is not in the plan.
Sure. And I think I would be loath to speak entirely on the behalf of the group, but I think my sense is that there is a lot of wonderful elements in this plan. And that there are some things that that are still left to be talked about and left to be done. And I I think that a lot of us feel too, please Beth, but a lot of us feel too that and I, I think that a lot of us feel too, please Beth, but a lot of us feel too that what we'd like to see is really a commitment to movement in a direction and not, beautiful plans can get put on desk for us for a lot of years. We'd like to see commitment to budget and to implementation, but please.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Hi, good evening, my name is Nicole Voss, I'm a Tiburon resident and voter, I've lived here for two years, I'm a parent, a mother to two young sons, one is two years old and the other is four weeks old, he's in the audience today, happy to be here today. I live in, on the Corinthian Island, the Tiburon side of Corinthian Island, so closer to downtown, and I really want my voice to be heard on this issue. Really, it's important that we increase access and improve foot traffic downtown and remove even traffic from Tiburon Boulevard, I know that's one of the concerns of increasing traffic, let's keep, let's keep, bring people here downtown. We really want, what we've done and we've worked together is to prioritize the asks. We've, we've met a lot with the town council members, we understand a lot more about how the process works, we know this isn't final, but we want, we have so many people here today to talk about it, so you understand how, how vocal we are in, in our needs. So our top ones are of course playgrounds, this seems simple, how do we improve our playgrounds? Blacky's Pasture, nature-based tunnel tops is very popular, also like the one by the, there could be a playground by the ferry, by the ferry dock, there's a nice little square path there that we, we think we could use. Also, community pool would be really important for us. I'm a sailor, so it's great that we teach our sons how to swim locally. We are going to Strawberry today, but again, let's get one more car off the road, it's, it's not free to go there as well. Kayak stand-up paddleboard launch, also very important, as well as teen amenities. How do we get kids interested in active, I mean, even in the town, how do we keep them here and, and make sure they're not making trouble elsewhere? Again, this is a five-to-ten, twenty-year plan, so I know that we'll grow, the kids will grow up through this town, I want to be part of the movement. And so, last part is, let's make Parks and Rec a reason to make, a reason for people to move to Tiburon and not away from it. Thank you.
Uh, thank you guys, so first, a quick anecdote about the traffic I cause when going to the pool. I did not get into the Strawberry Pool this year, I did not, I did not wake up at whatever designated hour and try to get the pass, so I drive actually Tiburon Boulevard, then up the highway, and I take an exit, and I, I pay $22 to use a pool at a hotel. So, if anyone's wanting a hot tip. Um, but yeah, you guys have heard our immediate needs, our one-to-five-year needs, just to rephrase, playgrounds, 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 maybe that's a picnic area, nature-based, and Blacky's Pasture, safety upgrades to Cypress Hollow Park, as Beth mentioned, no toddlers falling through slats, Bel Air Mini Park, this is really just flattening the park, addressing the ditches, making it more walkable, and less of a, a dog poop hazard area, and walking paths, and the one-to-five years, we're a very reasonable group, teen amenities, shaded picnic tables, paddleboard launch, community pool, there's a lot of variety of ways I think to do this, former Mayor Thompson talked about how TPC is on rented land from Tiburon, so what would it look like if we, you know, changed the terms and perhaps add, you know, more, more members or other partnerships? But the thing that has not been communicated as far yet today is just what type of group we are, we are very collaborative and we're willing to do the work, we're not asking town council to have everything, responsible for everything, but just to prioritize specifically. And if you don't believe me, a good example is the Bel Air Tiburon Library, so much of that was fundraised by moms, like 14 million, so put us to work, prioritize, and we'll be happy to, you know, really, maybe someone can donate a tree or a log to the nature-based playground, that sort of thing, thank you.
Any further public comment? Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Come introduce yourself and.
Yes, of course. I'm Bruce Abbott, I live on Greenwood Beach Road, I've lived in Tiburon for approximately 50 years, and I've listened with great interest to the appeal of these young ladies, and of course, I'm very sympathetic to have no opposition to, to the aspirations that they've expressed, and I wish them well and the achievement of them, but I'm, I'm here for, for a longstanding concern of my own, and that is the welfare of Blacky's Pasture. Now, Blacky's Pasture was formed, formed essentially in 1972, and I was very interested, Mr. Nick Farb, about your comment about what, how, what are the structure, how, how, what is the beginning, what is the origin of how, how we acquired that piece of property? And I would like to inform those of you who don't know, that it can be found in the archives, which are maintained in, in the public library, in county library, in the civic center. And that, that, in those archives, you will find, beginning in 1971, going through 1970 to a series of minutes of the Council of Tiburon, in which they worked, argued, conjoined, exchanged, and ultimately wound up purchasing, well, ultimately wound up with the issuance of a, a bond issue which purchased the property. Now, someone mentioned, did the town buy the property? The town did not, the people brought that, bought that property, they bought it through the issuance of a bond, and they paid for it for 30 years, and that is the people's property, it is not specifically town property, you should probably look at this more in the terms of a trust, you're the guardian or the trustee of that, of that property, and you're bound by the rules which articulated in the, in the referendum, and in the minutes defining the referendum. Now, there have been since 1972, they purchased approximately fifteen and a half acres of Blacky's Pasture, I'm running out of time quickly, so I'll, uh, the, it's, it's important to, 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 that we do things according to the rules. The, 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 just because the property is there, doesn't mean we can run over it in any way we like, but take, I urge you, please, if you haven't already done so, visit the library, take a look at those minutes, there, there's scads of them, and they, and you'll find all the contributions from so many people, that really is the names that you'll remember or have heard of, who really put, who really put this all together and made it possible, otherwise, it'd just be, it would have been, it would have been transferred to some, to another, another entity, and you wouldn't have access to it at all.
Bruce, may I ask you a question? Why are the minutes in the Civic Center Library? Is that because this occurred before we were incorporated as a town?
No, ma'am. Now, listen, the, the minutes used to be right at, right on that side of that wall, and, and it was there that I became familiar with, with these rules, with, with these, all those was articulated in the town, the town council minutes and all the records associated with it. Sometime after that, they were moved to the, to the, to the archives and the civic center, and I don't know why, but it was not concurrent with the incorporation of the town.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Are there any further comments from the public? Yes.
Good evening, council members, I am Liz Judge, I'm a commissioner on the Post Commission, and I had a couple things I wanted to just share with you. First of all, thank you all so much for engaging on this plan the way that you have, it's been wonderful to see your enthusiasm and to see you listening to the community, and all the flavors and colors of the feedback, I really, really appreciate your engagement, very eager to see movement here, and I know you are too, so thank you for that. I wanted to raise something that actually is sort of, feels maybe adjacent to the plan, but it's really important and instrumental for whatever, for whatever you decide to advance in, in these recommendations, and it just was brought to my awareness too, so we have, and I, I know we all know, and we have known, that the Green Team is a really instrumental, crucial part of maintaining Tiburon's parks. And the Green Team, I think you all know, they put together about 1,200 hours of work a year, that's the equivalent of a full-time employee and another half-time employee, so it's 1.5 full-time employee equivalents. The Green Team is mostly, and you know, we see their work, it's beautiful, it's amazing, it is part of what we love so much about this town, when you see the poppies along the old rail trail and the beautiful flowers, and just the lovely, the lovely nature throughout the park system, they are mostly in their 70s, a couple of them are in their 80s, and I think, I think we should all think about succession planning for the labor that is needed to keep maintenance of the park system. And I do know that just with the current park system, we're sort of short human hours, labor hours already, and that's with all of the Green Team's elbow grease. So they estimate, you know, when I talk to them, they estimate that we're short about 1.5 FTE equivalents as it is, and that's assuming these lovely people can keep going forever, and I don't think they can, so I think we'd be wise to think about what happens when they can't, or decide not to. So I'm eager to work with you on that, I'm eager to work with Post on that, and just wanted to raise it as you think about the budget and the amount of money needed to maintain current park system. Of course, Post will make recommendations, you know that we'll send you recommendations on what we think, what upgrades we think the parks should see and should do, and we hope you'll take our recommendations seriously. Those will come, I hope and I expect, with also recommendations about what is needed to maintain additional structures, but wanted to flag that we, we sort of have a shortfall right now in labor hours with existing structures and a needed succession plan, so thank you, and I'm excited to work with you on that.
I just want to take a moment to thank Commissioner Liz Judge, for people who don't know, she's a current Parks, Open Space, and Trails Commissioner, she's doing an amazing job, it's rare that we get a commissioner to come talk to us, and I just want to say thank you back for all your work.
Good evening, council members, and before I begin, I'd like to request the five minutes as you granted to the earlier speaker, is that possible? I didn't know there was an opportunity to email ahead to request additional time, or I would have.
So you're asking for, for, you know, the problem with that is.
I could stick with three, but I just wanted to make the point.
If you can run through three, that'd be great.
I'll do my best.
Thank you very much.
All right. My name is Greg Moore, I represent the Greenwood Beach Homeowners, we've submitted three letters about the park plan, and I'd encourage you to read them when you have a moment. In my other life, I am a, been a park and recreation planner for my entire career, in fact, I was the leader for the Golden Gate National Parks Conservancy of the Tunnel Tops and the Outpost Playground, it was my crowning project as CEO of the Golden Gate National Parks Conservancy. I say that to communicate to you how much I appreciate the effort you're taking to create a master plan for Tiburon, it's really a wise and wonderful idea to move forward, I appreciate all the listening that the staff, the consultants, and you, and the commission have given to all of us who care so passionately about parks, and I appreciate and respect every single idea that has come forward, because it comes forward with the passion and integrity of making this community a better place, and parks are critical to social cohesion and multi-generational play, learning, and nature. I do have some comments in the plan that I will quickly summarize, my first comments I would call "Nature Forward." I continue to work with parks in the 21st century here and around the globe, and the prevailing theme is "Nature Forward." We see in our parks that the conservation and open space is a key principle to why people value parks, and nature is central to the values of parks. I believe there's opportunity within this plan to make it more nature-forward, to enhance habitat and biodiversity when possible, to leave room for taking action related to sea level rise and climate change, to provide for nature play and social cohesion, and recommend, particularly in the Richardson Bay Linear Park that is adjacent to the Richardson Bay Sanctuary, that nature be given more room to grow and prosper. In fact, the Richardson Bay Special Area Plan requires buffer vegetation between development and, and that marine sanctuary. My second comments are about priorities and balance, you've had a hard job of knowing what to do and what to put where. In the Richardson Bay Linear Park, there are 12 to 15 new recreational uses added. I would like you to reconsider whether that park can hold that level of use, many uses are appropriate, in fact, the plan could easily accommodate five of the nine top priorities, but to ask it to cover all nine in a highly visited and crowded area with neighborhood impacts, I think is asking that space to do too much. And I would like you to also consider that many people access to the park through nearby neighbors, including ours, and I've already documented the safety issues that result because of that. Finally, I think the park is not, the plan could be more consistent with its guiding principles, I pointed out in our letter where I think it is inconsistent and not responsive to the guiding principles, and not consistent with Tiburon policy for Blacky's Pasture, or consistent with the Richardson Bay Special Area Plan, and I think that needs some attention. I think the why and the what of the plan are really quite strong, it's a little bit recreationally biased, so I'd love nature to be brought back into the equation a bit more, because of nature, by, is a recreational amenity of its own, I think the where and the how need more work. I think Blacky's Pasture has a distinct character that we have to be careful not to lose, I'm not opposed to new uses there, I just want to be, we recommend as homeowners that the balance be properly struck, and I think as a park and recreation person, the how in terms of the capital investment and the ongoing maintenance could be, should be considered, the cheapest park to maintain is a nature-based park to build and maintain. Thank you for living, giving me 15 additional seconds.
Thank you for your comments, is there a further comment? Yes, come introduce yourself and speak.
Hello, I'm Cecil Muller, I live on Greenwood Beach Road in Tiburon, I've lived here for more than 30 years, and I think that I would like everybody to think about the beautiful nature of Blacky's Pasture, it's a gorgeous area, I walk through there almost every day, and it, it strikes me almost more and more every time how beautiful it is, and I can't imagine why we want to do something to put build, more buildings or buildings there and more parking. We have a lot of people visiting as it is, we have lots of children playing on the Kegney screen, playing soccer, and all kinds of sports, I see them all the time, it's huge, and I, I appreciate that the parents want more for their children, but also please, there's older people here too, and we don't all have small children, and we love nature, so please consider that as well, thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Yes. Introduce yourself and speak.
My name is Michael Richmond, I actually have been here for over 20 years, and my home looks at the Richardson Bay sanitary pumping station recycling ponds, and I appreciate everything that everyone has said here. I signed up to get emails, and I thought I was going to be part of the process, but maybe I didn't get it, or maybe I overlooked it. The reality is, all I wanted to say tonight, before I talk to more people and get a better idea of what's going on, is I was actually shocked that we took something that the sanitary district had as a wildlife preserve, and we're putting hard structures on it, bathrooms, hard courts, these are, you know, contrary to the number-one priority of the why, and I would think that structures should be pushed more towards where there are existing structures, that's all I have to say. I don't think that they should be, I should be looking at a bathroom and a pickleball court. Let's preserve nature, right? That's what it's about, that's what we bought, that's what a lot of people buy, I mean, I, I have some empathy for maybe a bathroom closer, but I'm not sure that it couldn't be 25 yards of. twenty-five yards away where no one sees it. That's all I have to say. And then I'll follow up with David later. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike.
Hi there, I'm former Mayor Andrew Thompson. And I just want to compliment everybody for coming together and trying to make this process work and for the betterment of all of us to recreate with nature and for our kids to have some more active recreation. I just want to give some advice on my thirty years of experience here in the town. And one of the things that, my father actually was on the very first Parks and Open Space Committee. And unfortunately, he died when I was really young. And I asked one of his, all of his friends when I first got elected, what, what did, what was his best side? His, his best advice was, and something I've carried on, is this is all really good. But if you really want to make decisions about places and parks and everything, you have to spend an enormous amount of time in that place. You've got to spend the time playing around, bringing the kids and really spending time and brainstorming what you can do. So that's really important. And you immediately then figure out, okay, if we're doing this, these houses are right here. I already know what the impacts are. We don't need to pay, no, no offense, but we don't need to get a consultant enormous amount for them to figure it out when they're not here. We already can figure out a lot of this. So that's just one of the first things. The other thing is, when you get a big master plan, it's threatening, it's scary for the public. They think, oh, am I going to have Ferris wheels in front of my house? Well, of course not. But we all just have to take it in moderation. And the more interaction with people involved at the site like hates a lot of that. What else was I going to say? Oh, there's a lot we can do in Black East pasture. I wanted to do a lot. I was always outvoted by three votes that just wanted to keep the town living in stasis, absolutely no change. I think we can, I believe we can have the natural buffers and everything that the local residents want, as well as more activity in balance. I know we can get there. Just to quickly fix the record, I, we were talking about the TPC. I didn't say that the, the town is rent, rents land. What it was is, um, I don't, I'm finding out, nobody knows that the TPC's limited on families is not the club limiting the amount of families, it is the town's conditional use permit. So it's the town who's creating the limit on families. I think that should be changed right away. I believe the TPC is an incredible resource for building community, getting kids interacting off phones, all, all that stuff that you already know. So let's change that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andrew.
Maybe I can be the last one for you. My name is Nancy Peterson, and I'm also a resident of Greenwood Beach Road. And I've been reflecting a lot as I've heard all of you talk about raising children here. I've lived on Greenwood Beach Road for thirty-one years, I have a thirty-one-year-old. And it was just a privilege to be able to live there and raise him here. And he rode his bike, he went to the play structures, he, you know, he, he just lived in that outdoor area. And so I really appreciate the, the opportunities for families in this community. I think my main comment around the plan is really the, the scale, making the hard decisions of what really goes there, what really accommodates the people that are coming there. And some, it, it, you know, Greg spoke to the number of things that just were shown at Black East pasture and along Richardson Bay, the linear park, and there's so much change there. I think it can accommodate some new uses. I don't feel like it has to stay exactly as it is. But a lot of what it is, is what makes it special for residents, for kids growing up here, for now, older adults like me. And I try not to use that word with S on it, I just say older adult. And so I just really encourage you to look in, in the post commission, to look carefully at how to balance things and how to accommodate, if there is increased use, parking will be an issue if there was a pool, for example. And if it was at the sanitary district area, that's a long way to walk. So I think there, I mean, downtown might be a better location. So I think there's just a lot of considerations around level of use and making sure that that, that makes sense, so that it's not just jumping at, this is popular now, we're going to put this in. We're going to pave this area because we want this, this to happen. So we really appreciate all the effort. I know, I know so many people have put a lot of effort into this. And, um, you know, we're, I, I think, I think I speak, well, not for all of our neighbors, but I think a lot of them also feel like, you know, change is going to happen, but it's how to manage that change in a really positive way for the future. Good, I got that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there further public comment?
Hi, Chuck Hornbrook. So I was asked by staff to sit next to our consultant because I'm on the, I'm also the chairperson of the Parks, Open Space and Trails Commission. So I was asked by staff to sit next to the consultant because I'm part of the subcommittee on that. So that's why I was sitting over at the table. However, I am a citizen of the town first and foremost. And I wanted to echo what was mentioned by a lot of folks here is that as, and part of our agenda that we'll have on the Parks, Open Space and Trails Commission is going through the priorities, particularly the ones that need to happen very quickly, such as upgrades to Bel Air, upgrades to Cypress Hollow, and thinking about what a nature-based playscape would look like in Black East pasture and identifying that. So we'll probably have a number of subcommittees. My request by the town council and also request of all the citizens of the town is to come and be part of those subcommittees so that we get your feedback, because it is very important for both understanding the needs of the users, but also people who live in the neighborhood, which I've had a number of phone calls with some folks from the Redlands today specifically on that of like what they wanted at Black East pasture. And it's important to understand that. I think that was a great comment from someone of like, just look around at the neighborhoods and understand that. So I just wanted to be very, just direct with you all about that, that that's going to be on our agenda. That's something I wanted to talk to you about, Councilmember Warner. And that we're going to be on the, on the docket for that. So hopefully, when we plan ahead, that you guys will make space on your agenda for these items, that you get addressed as they come out from your policy group, which is the Post. Thank you for your time. And if you have any other questions, I'm happy to sit as a, as the staff member over there. But I wasn't quite sure if I was going to be recognized as being somebody who was here. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your service. Be assured, we always recognize you, Chuck Hornbrook.
Yes. Hi, um, thanks for doing all of this. It sounds like there's been an incredible amount of energy and passion and thought put into all of this planning. My name is Sahar Nadiri, I live in Bell East with my three and five-year-old. Jenna and I's kids hang out at potty park, which is what Cypress Park is called because there's no bathroom. So the, our, um, kids put out their portable potties and that's where they go to the bathroom. And for a long time, I was like, I missed, I thought I was misunderstanding that that's what it was called, but then I got confirmation. So I do think like just some basic sanitary movement would be greatly appreciated. I'm what you might call a one-agenda kind of member of this group. I'm here to advocate for the pool. I'm a cardiologist. So if any of you have any family members in medicine, you know, we're very paranoid about safety. And most of you probably know that drowning is the number cause of, well, number one cause of death in children between the ages of one and four. And I will tell you, it's incredibly impossible to get your kids into swim lessons here, to get them access to a pool. I can tell you offline my personal experiences that were not so positive at TPC as I was touring and some of the issues they have with inclusivity. The only other option here is one where you have to get a recommendation from another member of the, um, community. It's just very limiting. I've literally stopped rounds in the ICU and said, excuse me, I have to sign my child up for swim classes. And if I don't do it right at eight, she will not be able to swim. So I, I, I totally appreciate everyone's concerns around the issue of the aesthetics and preserving nature. I love Black East too. It is my, it was my solace during a very, very difficult time through the pandemic. I do not want it destroyed, but I do think we have to realize the safety of our children and also realize that our older individuals need a pool. Water aerobics is a really great exercise for a lot of folks who can't bike, run on concrete and whatnot. I think a pool encompasses kind of a use for everybody. So I just wanted to point out the safety issues around not having a pool. I'll very quickly tell you a story. We were all at a friend's house in Tiburon. The children were all wearing floaties. The son gets out and says, I'm hungry, but I have to potty first. So they take the floatie off, he goes to the bathroom, comes back, his dad's making him lunch, looks back and he's in the pool. And his sister pulled him out because he just for a moment forgot that he didn't have his floaties on because he's a five-year-old that doesn't know how to swim. We have a lot of kids in our community who don't know how to swim because they don't have easy access to pools. So I'd really like you guys to consider that, thank you.
Is there further public comment, please?
Hello, my name is Brian Mott, and I'm a citizen here for the last three or four years. I live over at seventeen fifty-one Mar West, so just behind here. And Beth, my neighbor, encouraged me to come down because I'm a fierce advocate of open space and parklands and nature and their, their impact on the community. When my wife and I moved here, there was a couple of things we loved. One was all the young families here on our street. We had quite a few and, and that was great, even though we didn't have any young children of our own. But I'm here to put, throw my support behind the green shirts because I, I find the, the young families here are, are a very vibrant part of the community. And I think it's important to cater to, to all aspects of the society. And then number two, you know, we moved here because of the open space and the access to nature, the water, having the trails right behind us were amazing. But we were a little bit dismayed when we found out, because my, my wife and I both love the water. We like kayaking, we like stand-up paddle boarding and swimming. To, to be, we look out on the water and we have no access to it. We can't, we have no easy way to launch a paddleboard, we have no way to launch our kayaks. Certainly not a safe way. So we were, we were a little bit confused on why that's the case here in such a beautiful area with such, surrounded by water. So we're definitely throwing our support, and I, I was the first to sign up when I got the, the, the survey, which is great, by the way. And, and put my support behind that amongst other things. But the open trails behind us, amazing, but it would be wonderful if we had contiguous trails because we like long hikes and to be able to go along the whole ridge line. So anyway, just to, just to wrap up, what you're doing is amazing. I love the process, I love the foundation that you guys are laying and the framework. And I'm here to help wherever I can because I think it's very important.
Hi, Andy Hunt, I live on Reading Court, which is the top Stewart Drive. And mine's more of a question, it's a comment, but it's about process. And I, I very much like the work that's been done. And I understand the document, looked through it a couple of times about, these are the things we want, these are the bits of land we've got, and these are the costs. And I think the decision-making process from there on is, we could do these things in these areas. It's sort of a flatland and we could do things. But which does get chosen to be done? And how do the consequences that are less desirable get ameliorated or get factored into that decision-making process? The, this, the document's great as far as it goes. I feel it lacks a little bit about how we, um, looking at you, will make that final decision because you've got lots of preferences expressed and places to put them. But which one does get done? And if there's two good ideas, which one is less consequential on the people around? Or maybe it has less negative consequences on others around? And I'd love to have a, the document spell that out, or you guys take it on and decide how to use it. Because otherwise, I feel it's, um, gonna create problems and friction down the road if that is ambiguous. And I've personally got issues with some of the excessive plans that might be put in place at Black East because of the parking that is probably not going to be adequate. And I live on Stewart Drive, and that's not a great car park. And yet it is already used as one for the McKegney Green area. And this would just probably add fuel to that particular fire. That's the sort of consequences, I'm interested in how that will be decided upon. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any further public con-
Madam Mayor, we do have a couple of folks online who would like to comment.
All right, are we closing the public comment here?
That's up to you, I just wanted you to make sure you knew.
Okay, thank you, I don't see anyone coming forward. Three, two, one, let's go online.
We have Rob online.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Fredrickson, Tiburon Town Council members for giving me the opportunity to say a few words. I'm sorry, I'm unable to make it there in person. My name is Robert Paul, I've lived in Tiburon for the last eight years and am father of a rising seventh-grade daughter who's developed a love of the sport of beach volleyball. I'm speaking to you tonight in support of proposing beach volleyball courts as part of the Town of Tiburon Park and Recreation Master Plan. And I wanted to share my excitement about why beach volleyball, but also the multiple benefits I believe it could provide the town and our children who live here. First of all, volleyball is one of the fastest-growing collegiate and youth sports in the country. In fact, it's the number one team sport for girls in high school and college here in the US. And in twenty sixteen, beach volleyball became an NCAA sanctioned sport. And today, there's over a hundred NCAA programs. In California, since twenty fifteen, the number of schools offering beach volleyball doubled. But unfortunately, here in Marin County, we don't have enough beach volleyball courts. By my count, there is four of them in all of Marin that are accessible to the public. And this makes it extremely difficult for children and adults to participate in the sport. And it also prevents the many benefits the sport could bring to Tiburon. The first benefit of adding beach volleyball courts here in Tiburon is fun for all ages. My daughter, wife and I spent the summer in beach volleyball tournaments from Santa Monica down to Huntington Beach. And one of the things we love the most is seeing kids as young as five and adults as old as eighty playing together. This is a great sport to truly create community. The second benefit of in-beach volleyball courts is low noise, low cost and low environmental impact. The courts are a relatively simple construction comprising of sand, nets, posts, and have minimal impact on the coastal environment. The players also frequently maintain the courts, which would be little to no maintenance for the town. And finally, because there's so few beach volleyball courts in Marin, building them here in Tiburon would bring additional revenue to the town, not only from volleyball clubs that want to reserve them for weekly practices, but for the growing demand to find venues for small Northern California beach volleyball tournaments. Visitors would inevitably stop at the Cove Shopping Center and local businesses and restaurants in downtown Tiburon. These are just a few of the positive benefits that beach volleyball courts could bring to the town. I respectfully request that the beach and sand volleyball courts be made a high priority on the list of possible projects within this master plan. Thank you so much for listening and for your consideration.
Thank you, is there further online comment?
Yes, we do, we have Lena.
Hi, this is Lena Godfrey, thanks so much for giving me a chance to speak. I have been present at various town council and post meetings before, and you probably recognize my name. And I wanted to speak to something that hasn't really come up very much tonight. While I stand in support of parents and, uh, parents for Parks and Rec and have a green shirt and all of the above, I want to speak really to the issue of accessibility. I've been a Tiburon resident for ten years now. I have two teenage stepdaughters, actually one who's now twenty, and, uh, four, now, now four young children between the ages of five months and six years old. Obviously, we use our parks a lot with that spread of ages and especially with my youngest four. Playgrounds, parks, open space, all of that is, is and should be a huge part of our lives. One issue that we've encountered is that there's really, really poor accessibility to a lot of the amenities in Tiburon. For example, my daughter, who's six, who uses a wheelchair, is not able to access any of the playgrounds in our community because of certain things like curb cuts, wood chips and other things that make them completely inaccessible. because of cer- certain things like curb cuts, wood chips and other things that make them completely inaccessible for her to play. We don't currently really have anywhere in our home community and even in the larger community of Marin to play, to bring her to play alongside her able-bodied siblings. We drive typically about an hour to the South Bay to find a place where they can really play together in an inclusive environment. I think that's pretty embarrassing for this town and there are countless other, other examples that I, I will outline and write to you at the town council. Um, as far as where we can improve specifically in little spots, but that's just a sort of a larger scale example of overall accessibility needs in the town. Um, playgrounds are my first priority, given the young ages of my children and the fact that I'd love for them to be able to play together close to home without, you know, loading everybody up and coming against naptime, naptimes and all of that stuff. Um, however, there's, you know, to consider as well as young kids is the adults and grandparents and multi-generational pieces that come with bringing children to play. I want grandparents to be able to take their grandchildren to play. I want, you know, people with injuries. I want siblings with injuries. I want everybody to be able to access the play so that this can be an inclusive and accessible town for all of our children and all of our multi-generational uh, populations. So that's really my piece today. Um, I think that while we can look at specific things that need to be fixed and those, those are nice things to do. I think as we develop a master plan going forward, it needs to be at the crux of what we plan. It needs to be there from the get-go of planning to, to consider accessibility and inclusivity from the beginning. Otherwise, what ends up happening is that they sort of look like Band-Aid solutions. I'll give you an example here, which is that Reed Schools spent one point three million dollars or more on redoing their playgrounds at Reed and at Bel Air and the playgrounds were inaccessible. Yes, they met ADA regulations and no, they were not functionally accessible to many disabled kids, including my daughter. That's embarrassing and unacceptable and I really hope that the town of Tiburon, when putting together their plans, will do better and will consider this stuff from the get-go. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, we have a phone number, four one five. Please state your name. Four one five two nine nine phone number. We'll move on to the next one. Uh, Michael Shepherd.
Hi, uh, sorry I can't be with you in person tonight. I'm, I'm really pleased with the report and everybody's consideration of it. It seems like there's a huge amount of consensus. Um, but I think some of the conversation tonight has underscored the hard work yet to come. Including, you know, how much is the town actually going to spend? And which of these many wonderful potential uses is the town going to spend it on? Um, I think it's great that the town has recognized and the plan recognizes that there are parts of the park system like South of Knoll that should be preserved pretty much as they are. Um, and then I think it seems like there's a lot of really low hanging fruit here like improving the playgrounds, which shouldn't be all that expensive and will really improve the quality of life for a lot of parents and young children. Um, and then beyond that, it, it sort of becomes harder. There seems like, at least to me, there's one good space unless Blackie's pasture gets employed, which has some interesting issues associated with it. But there's one good space, that's the sanitary district ponds. It's not incredibly accessible, but it's a whole lot more accessible than other locations. Um, and then it seems like the two uses, the two potential additional uses that have the most support are pickleball courts and a swimming pool. Um, so one of them could go at uh, the sanitary district ponds with efforts to mitigate any impacts on people who live nearby. Maybe that means an indoor facility, maybe not. Um, and, and then it gets harder. I mean, a pool, uh, as the report shows, is really expensive. Um, although it would be a great amenity for the town to have. So my sense of this is that the town should look into acquiring a site downtown. Um, you probably need to float a bond issue to build a pool to begin with. And as I think Commissioner Moon said at the post-commission meeting, it probably wouldn't be all that much more expensive to include some acquisition costs of downtown property in that. Um, we have a lot of money people in this town. I'm not one of them, but people who are really good at figuring out money. We have a lot of really committed parents who want to help raise money. And so I think one of the things the council really needs to consider is can we get enough support and enough money to build a swimming pool downtown, which would be a great thing for the town and its citizens and also great for the town's downtown businesses and tax base. And so I think those are the really hard issues that the council will have to grapple with. The WRT work has been fabulous and I think it's led to a, a consensus on these easier things. But the hard work is still to come. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment?
Yes, we have Sarah Basham.
How, how many more do we have online?
Two more.
All right.
Hi, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, first of all, generally I'm so pleased that Tiburon is pursuing a master plan rather than a piecemeal approach. Just, just generally, I'm, I'm, I'm so proud that this town is actually taking such an approach. Um, towns should be designed this way and not just piecemeal. Um, I do have a specific thing in mind though. I'd like to speak in support of the mini park at Bel Air. I live a few houses down. I have a six and a four year old. Um, our nearby options are Cypress Hollow and Bel Air School. Uh, Cypress Hollow has no bathrooms. This has been mentioned a few times before. Pushing a stroller and uh, getting kids scootered there takes about fifteen minutes. If you have a kid who has an emergency bathroom situation, which every kid, that every bathroom situation is an emergency. Um, it's a really terrible experience trying to, trying to get home quickly. Um, the Bel Air School Playground is, is fabulous for my six-year-old. I, he barely makes the cut for what is advisable for safe use of that playground, but my four-year-old does not. It is not a safe playground for young children. There are, there are signs that rightfully post that that is not a good place for young children. Um, the Bel Air Mini Park would give us closer access to our own home for bathroom use. It would give us a normal, basic necessity for small children. It's safer than the Bel Air School. Bel Air School also isn't even, isn't open to the public for many hours a day. Rightfully, it's a school. Um, this is more than just like these specific parks don't meet my needs. Um, this is really about our community. This is a small space right near the bus stop for a lot of kids who come home from school every day, every evening. There's parents who want to gather there. Um, this is a space where neighbors are already gathering, but, but kind of tentatively. Um, there's a whole group of moms in this area who, who gather via Picola every, every Thursday. We're the ones who throw little Friday parties at, through the bus stop on Fridays. We gather for pumpkin carving contests and Easter egg hunts and we're trying to form a community here and to support network for each other. And having a space like this is really important and this is, this is what Tiburon should be providing for its citizens is places to gather and form community with each other. Um, they're really tight bonds that are being created in this community and we, we want this space. Um, so overwhelmingly, I know that this group is supporting this and I just wanted to voice my support as well.
Thank you.
And we have one more, Sarah.
Hi, yeah, this is Sarah Reid. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Um, I just, I will not take three minutes. I promise. It's been a wonderful night with a lot of comments. I just want to air, like, voice my strong support. I had all these wonderful caught talking notes. But literally all these other women have, and men, some of the men who I don't know, thank you for your comments as well, like, have nailed the comments. And I have like tears in my eyes in some of these comments because it's so important that we build this community. I just want you to know that there's all kinds of moms putting their kids to bed tonight and dads wearing the green shirts, literally with like earbuds in their ears, trying to, to participate in this wonderful community building that you're doing. And the Bel Air Mini Park, the Black, Black East pasture, the sup access to our beautiful nature. And we just want to use this beautiful nature more and be safe and bring our families up in it. And I just want to say thank you so much for this amazing opportunity. And just know there's lots of parents in green shirts putting the kids to bed. So thank you very much.
So we have one more.
Uh, at this point, yes.
Yes.
Uh, can I just say after this one more, uh, we, we need to take a break, so.
Hey.
Hello, this is the four one five number, correct? Yes, if you can state your name.
Yes, Parker Pringle. Proceed?
Yes.
This is about uh, the kayak stand-up paddleboard thing. I just want to, people should get out their pencils. Um, one up at uh, Black East pasture, there's the Greenwood Beach Restoration Project. That's what you want to write down. And it's uh, going to involve basically uh, restoring the beach. It's going to be fantastic. But it has a, uh, part of the plan is to remove a lot of sand from the delta in front of the uh, where the creek flows out into the bay. And that delta is, it stretches out about four hundred feet into the bay. And it's pretty good for a high water kayak or stand-up paddleboard launch. And they're talking about excavating it down two feet and that's going to be replaced probably with bay mud. And uh, that's going to kind of remove that amenity. Uh, I suggest people come down here and walk out here at low tide, morning or whatever and uh, check it out. It's pretty interesting. Um, and then on the other end of Tiburon in Shoreline Park, the BCDC permit for the park contains a public access amenity that I don't think was ever built. And I don't know why, but it was a tidal step. And um, that may play into the kayak stand-up paddleboard thing too. And I'd like to second the comments of Andy Hunt and the Greenwood Beach folks. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's the last.
That's the last. Uh, we'll take now um, a five-minute break. And we convene at eight thirty-eight. Okay, folks, we're going to call the meeting to order in four seconds. Four, three, two, one.
Gavel, gavel.
I am calling the town council meeting to order again. And we have one more public comment. Are we?
No, we're, we are done with public comment.
We are po- so we'll bring it back to the council for comment. Any further comments or direction from the council?
Uh, yeah, I've got a couple of things I wanted to cover. Um, so first of all, I think, um, I really appreciate the, the public comment and the perspectives. And I think again, like as we thought about this process from the beginning, we thought about how Tiburon is, is changing and also what's staying the same. Um, I think as we looked at this, we, we tried to look at a diversity of ages and needs. Um, and I think, um, I, I was especially, I think through this round of public comments, um, the Greenwood Cove Homeowners Association, I think it was Greg. Um, and sort of taking a look at their letter, I thought it was a really thoughtful approach. I think for the plan, um, uh, Post Commissioner, um, Liz Judge's comments around the green team. I think it'd be great if we could figure out a way of, of, I think, representing that or incorporating that. Um, that maintenance in the maintenance portion of the, of the plan. Um, I think, um, thinking about, um, you know, around the scoring. Um, I, I forget what the gentleman's name was that brought up the scoring and, and how you account for negative feedback and, um, uh, I hesitate to use the words he used, consequences to a neighborhood, but maybe impact on surrounding neighborhoods, um, to reduce friction. Um, and then also the comments around, um, having a little more, um, uh, accessibility within the, within the framework. And, and thinking about that as a, as, uh, as a portion of it as well. Um, but I think, I think, you know, again, as I mentioned on the front end of it, um, you know, I, I think you, you've made incredible strides, I think, towards getting this into a state where, where I think we can, we can use this to think about the next, hopefully twenty plus years. Um, and then it, you know, again, the last piece is, is thinking about how often should we refresh public surveys or public, um, uh, um, you know, commentary around the, around the planning, um, and, and taking that into account. So I think that's, that's kind of, I'll stop there, um, and, uh, yield the floor back to my fellow council members.
Okay, so I, I want to start by saying, I am so excited. I want to thank parents for parks and rec. I want to thank everyone who spoke today. I want to tell you that what I see is the vision, the vision for the future. And, you know, it takes, it takes, uh, I also do not want to be remiss in thanking David Eschew. David Eschew is the staff person who worked alongside WRT. And he deserves a great debt of gratitude, uh, for talking, uh, to everyone and, and helping guide our consultant. Um, you know, I, I have a, I have a real, a vision, a vision that our parks are inclusive. That children of all abilities can play together. You know, when I was at a Parks Master Plan, uh, meeting, um, I was, I was really taken by the, the comments we heard tonight by Lena Godfrey. The idea that her children cannot play together in a park was heartbreaking. And we are Tiburon and we can do better. And I am committed that through this process, uh, we will figure out a way to address those needs. Because it is, it is unconscionable that we have parks where a family can't play together. Um, you know, I also think our parks master planning process has found, you know, play structures that need upgrading. Park facilities that need work. Um, what I'm really excited about the pop is the possibilities, uh, for the future. Um, you know, about seven years ago, I started on a quest to acquire the ponds at McKegney Green. Right by McKegney Green from the Richardson Bay Sanitation District. And part of what I did is I partnered with a leadership class at Del Mar. And they came out, we had meetings at the site and we said, what, what would you like there? You know, I didn't have a nice consultant like WRT, but it was kind of the, the, the children speaking. The children's voices saying what they wanted and they wanted a pool and a teen hangout. They wanted like a little place where they could get coffee and sit and do homework. And they had so many great ideas. And, you know, now fast forward, we've got the benefit of a very experienced consultant. And I just want to say how excited I am about the possibilities. And, you know, um, the children really don't have a voice. And I want to thank the parents for coming forward. You know, one of the things I will talk about is my children growing up in Tiburon and not having a public pool. And, you know, we did go to some of the private clubs. I think they're all fantastic, but we didn't have $25,000 for a registration fee and a couple of hundred dollars a month. We need to have a public pool. I think the appropriate place is where the sanitation ponds are. Um, I do think that when I look at the proposal, uh, before us. There was one s- uh, slide on page eighty-nine that I thought we were taking out of the proposal. I would ask that it be deleted. It does show pickleball courts, uh, next to McKegney Green. And there was a lot of input from the pickleball players and Moran Pickleball is here. That they wanted courts that were more protected from the wind, possibly indoor. And I do think there's better, uh, locations and also the community. I received a lot of complaints already. And I think what I also want to say to the community that, you know, the chart on page eighty-nine, if it stays. That is not what we're recommending. That is what the consultant is saying. Well, there's all these possible things that could go in here. And I think we heard a lot of people talk tonight. People from Greenwood Beach Road, people that just wanted to see a more natural park. And I would request that that slide go out. But what I'm most excited about is seeing the public come forward. Seeing the parents organize a petition with two hundred and forty-three or forty-six, forty-six. I am one of those, two hundred and forty-six. Um, and I think that we have a great future ahead of us. I also love, I know this took a lot of time for, uh, I think Beth Mix did this, this, this took a lot of time. But what I really appreciate is seeing the short-term goals and the long-term goals. We should not have any parks in Tiburon that are unsafe, unsanitary. And that is something we need to do immediately. We need to fix that. In addition, teen amenities, uh, when my, when my children became teenagers, and I'm going to tell you, it's going to happen to you, right? And, and I found out my son was hanging out at CVS. I said, what are you doing at CVS? Why would you hang out at CVS? I don't want you hanging out at CVS. What happens there? And I said, you know, I'm on the town council. Every police officer knows me. They're going to know who you are. They know you. You know, because I wanted to make sure my kids weren't getting in trouble, right? And, you know, uh, fast forward, you know, now the kids are still hanging out at CVS. Because there are not good options for teens. The ranch provides amazing programming, amazing resources for children. If you have young kids, please go to the ranch. It does stop at around, what, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, Isaac? Around that age where they kind of grow out of it.
Friday night hangouts are, are pretty good through eighth grade.
Okay, yeah, through eighth grade. Um, and, you know, I, we need more options for teens. We need places they can go. But again, I just want to say how incredibly excited I am. Uh, this is just the beginning. This is just the beginning of our path into the future for Tiburon, for our families, for our seniors. For everybody to be able to enjoy our community. And also I was struck by the fact that, you know, people just want to build community here. And what better way than hanging out at the park? I know they'll say play pickleball, right? Okay, because I know people make friends. But, you know, it's, it's, um, it's just, I, I can't tell you how excited I am to see this. So thank you for all your work. Thank you for your time. Thank you for giving up your time with your families to be here. Thank you.
Uh, so I would like to echo the thanks and the enthusiasm, uh, for the input and, and the organized input. I would remind everybody that tonight is about the adequacy of the master plan to guide our decisions and our policies. And the map to prioritize projects and meet recreation needs. Um, in accordance with what our resources are. That's the big picture. On the smaller picture, I'd like to add another comment to the comment I made about collateral impact. Part of it was, uh, addressed by Liz Judd. Um, one of the collateral inputs is, uh, impacts is staffing of joint rec. And, uh, public work staff, um, that accompanies any of these projects. And the accompanying need for workspace. And I'm bringing this up, uh, because the status of the corp yard has been somewhere on a list since I have been on the council. And those needs have never been fully addressed. And why they're important with respect to impact is our public works, uh, staff and whatever resources they are. Are one of the primary responses to emergencies here in the town. So any impacts that any recreation, uh, project and its need for infrastructure have on staffing and resources that might affect that. I think is something that should be considered. I, I see the town, um, attorney frowning.
He, he does that.
He wants to go home now.
I was going to suggest that we can stay after the meeting and I'll explain it in full detail, but I won't do that. That said, um, I, I have no further comments on the document. Any further comments?
I do, but you can go ahead. Okay. Um, so I think I'm, I'm also very excited about this process. We kind of, we proposed this, what, a little over a year ago, we were getting a bunch of good ideas that were sort of piecemeal. And we wanted to, um, uh, get a framework. But what I, I guess what I didn't anticipate is how much excitement and enthusiasm and visioning it would create. Because it's really, this is more than, I mean, we did a general plan. That didn't generate that much excitement, but, but, but we do this. And this has sort of become, I think, you know, somebody used this term earlier, but it's sort of a visioning process for the community. It's just very exciting. So I, I'm, I'm delighted with how it's unfolding. Um, I want to thank, thank staff and the consultants for listening carefully. Um, I'm very used to consultants hearing what we say and then coming back with essentially the same thing that they had before. And so this is, this is great. Very good consulting work. I, I think I want to say a couple of things again though, uh, because I think they're not quite fully where they need to be. One question I have is, can we put up certain pages from the presentation? Can you put that back up? I'd like to first look at page eighty-nine. This is something that, uh, Commissioner Thier was talking about earlier. I, I think, I, I, I heard one of the speakers, um, who was online earlier. Commenting about how there's a lot of low hanging fruit, and I think there is. The stuff with the neighborhood parks should be a no brainer. We should just take these, take these comments and fix them. You know, that's, that, that's not the hard part. The hard part, that's, it'll be really valuable, but it's not the hard part. The hard part is the common spaces that the whole town, our front door, the common, the common spaces that the whole town shares. Like Blackies and McKegney and South Knoll, and figuring out what to do there where it's, it's really, uh, kind of the, the jewel of, of what we have and it's what everyone enjoys and cares about. And there's a lot of, uh, competing proposals here. So I think, I don't think that's page, looking for page eighty-nine. There it is. That's the one. So, um, I think the risk is, I think the risk here is overbuilding. That's what we, that's what the, the risk has always been, um, because we get twenty good ideas and then being good consultants, you put them all in. And then we have, uh, we have a county fair instead of a park, right? We have all these booths. Um, and, and it's not, it's not what we want. So the hard part is identifying those key things and putting them in both in a harmonious way, but also being judicious about what we, what we put in. So I think when you look here. And maybe these are examples because you want to bring to life the zones or something, but, um, in a second, I'm going to ask you to go to page sixty-six, but not quite yet. Here you have the, uh, climbing wall, the pickleball, you have bocce. You have a number of things that aren't. Yeah, we, we did this statistically valid survey that, you know, identifies what people want. And a lot of these things are pretty low on that list. Yeah. And so I just think if we're going to be, um, if we're going to be putting together a plan for this joint space that we all care about. We should be very judicious about what we put in there. We should pick the things that people really want the most. And not put sort of everything in the, what is it, the R1 or whatever the category is of, uh, you know, more developed stuff by the parking lot. So if you go to page sixty-six.
I think sixty-seven where you want to see the survey results?
Yeah, this one.
Yeah.
Yeah, this one. Kind of, I, you know, here you identify, uh, the priorities and, you know, I guess, I guess I kind of don't want to see on a map anything that comes from, you know, certainly not the gray or green zone and very few from the orange zone. I think we, this is, this is our, our prize land. We should only put things here that, that are truly cared about. And so, you know, I, again, I think this is kind of for the sake of example, but I don't think we should put stuff in here that isn't really very important. The other chart I think you might consider putting in. I'm just going to toss this out and if you think it's a bad idea, just reject it. But I think what this could use is one of these matrix charts where you have on one axis, how much it's wanted and on another axis, either how much it costs or how big an impact it'll have on the park. So in other words, if something isn't that wanted, but it's tiny, like the bike pump station that we now have. You know, that falls into a quadrant of low impact, like, you know, low desire, but low impact. So we could consider it. If something is really expensive and has a big impact, but it's very desired, we should also consider that. But if something is high impact and low desire, then that gets tossed out. So I don't know if that is something you would find useful or not, but to me it would, you know, when I look at something that isn't a high priority, sometimes I wonder, well, did they put that in there because they think it's low impact? Um, or cheap, maybe, but I think that would be illuminating to kind of figure out why, why suggestions are being made in different parts of the park. The last thing I want to say is I, I want to make clear, I, I've said this before, but I want to make really clear my view about the area of the, for the land that we have from the sanitation district. I think we should, it's no secret that I think we should approach the sanitation district about acquiring the rest of it. I think we would all want to do that if we could. But I also think, uh, to me, I, 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 I'm very supportive of the idea of a swimming pool somewhere in town. Uh, but I'm not supportive of any big building structures or anything that will draw a lot of traffic. Uh, the way that, uh, Mill Valley Civic Center does. For a pool structure in our, in our ni- nature park. I think, I think those are incompatible uses. And I just want to make very clear, I, I'm open to listening to anybody, but I, I think if we put a, a building, a civic center there with a pool. The parking lot will be jammed and it's just not compatible with a nature park. So I, I think that belongs elsewhere. Uh, I think the kinds of things I would be open to putting in. I think the kinds of things I would be open to putting in that area are. They can be structures. But they should be outdoor amenities that are compatible with the walk into a nature park. And that's, you know, I said it before, I'll say it again, but I just want to make clear that, that I, I really feel strongly about that and I'm happy to. You know. Elaborate on that or discuss that further at the, at the proper time. But I'm very encouraged. I'm really excited. If we can. If we could quantify and maybe separate the neighborhood park improvements because they're, I get a little cheer for saying it, but they're easier to do. Then I, I think that's. That's probably something we'll all support quickly.
So I know we were not going to talk about specific projects, but as long as you brought up the concern about the swimming pool. I would just like to add a piece of information that, that certainly is verifiable. The swimming pool is an idea came up. Ten years ago, five years ago, I don't remember, but at that time I did get some information from Mill Valley Recreation Center of how the pool is supported. And one of the major supports for their swimming pool. Are the annual passes they allow for people who do not live in the jurisdiction. And that addresses your concern about drawing traffic because if that turns out to be the way. Community pools need to be supportive and still affordable to everybody in the town. It will do what you fear, which is draw traffic.
So I just wanted to say something quickly, since we're on the subject of, of the pool, which we're not deciding on tonight. So when I talk about a pool, I just want to make clear. I'm not talking about a big community center in the middle of our park. I'm talking about a pool. So I want to make that clear. I think it is a recreational use. I think it is compatible with that area. I also think it's a much better idea than putting pickleball where everyone's going to hear the noise and complain. But I just wanted to make clear that my comments were not. A large Mill Valley sized community center. It was a swimming pool.
Indoor or outdoor?
I, I think it's probably worth. Tableting this for when we're actually going through the evaluation.
And, and.
Say whatever you want, Jack, because you've been patient.
Just, just to clarify, my comment on what was supported. By the out of town residents was the swimming pool, not the rec center in general.
Okay, Jack has been waiting patiently.
I just wanted to say that I have not much to say because. I'm not going to talk about specifics because our. Our agenda here was to direct the consultants what to do going forward. And so I will talk specifically about page eighty nine and I know that Vice Mayor Thier and Councilman Waller have talked about this. I'll wait till Peter Wench is ready to listen because this is talking to him. Yep. So, so with respect to page eighty nine, I appreciate both Councilman Wallner and Vice Mayor Thier's comments on it. You know, page eighty eight has three examples for one space, page ninety has two examples for one space. And then page eighty nine has the one example that shows the everything page. Yeah. And, and I, and I agree, I don't like that. If you want to break, put more examples in the same space just to show. The possibilities, I'm okay with that. I don't necessarily know that we need to remove it, but I agree that eliminate it to one example. And it's the example that shows we win everything is not the right approach. So that's my only comment with respect to that. Otherwise, I, I really appreciate what you've done and the direction you're going. And I think. That all of the comments and correct me if I'm wrong, but that my fellow council members have said, they're sort of incremental improvements there. There's no, no wholesale change. That I'm expecting you need to make with this, except to go forward and enhance in the areas that they've asked. So thank you. I love being on this track. We have plenty of time to talk about individual amenities. Just so you know, my current. Thinking is that I'm consistent with Councilmember Wellness thinking with respect to the pool. I think it's much better downtown than there. But that's again, something for another day. The really good news is. We just. You know, the, the Martha property is, is.
That's where we should put the pool.
It's, yes. The transaction is going to close and.
Just kidding.
And, and so, so we have a hundred and ten acres. More of open space that's adjacent to the park, to, to the town rather. And they only needed a million dollars of our money, even though we authorized two. So we have another million dollars to burn. On the master plan improvements. So that's my feel good comment of the night.
Jack, I knew you were going to say something wonderful. I was just waiting for that, that part. Thank you. I love that perspective.
So, I mean, burn, I mean constructively. Anyway, but so again, back to direction from me anyway is on the right track. Make the incremental improvements and keep, keep going and keep everyone in the loop and. And you know, the one caveat I have to throw out is like, we keep getting more and more public engagement. We never want to turn off that spigot. So, you know. We, we just have to be able to accommodate that as we go. But thank you so much for all your input and your efforts.
So I would like to speak briefly to give Jack an example of what a short comment is. Thank you. But thank you for this work. It really is important and I, I do support the idea that this map as is. Is misleading and I am agnostic whether you eliminate it or make it clear that more than one. Activity, whatever works visually is, is fine. Any further comments?
Well, we actually, just, if it, if it is left in, I think there should be big disclaimers that these are just. Examples because a lot of the public was confused and thought. That, that we were putting all these things in the park.
Yes. Were you going to say something, Isaac?
I was going to say. Examples probably are better served than an appendix or some area where it's not part of the core presentation. And that also gives you an opportunity if you, if you have the time to maybe come up with some more ideas. Without sort of their, their, you know, drawing away from the, from the core, the core plan itself.
And, and the only other thing I would add is that if you're doing maps like this, you might want to show all the possibilities. It's like you have a map showing it as it is. You have one showing one thing here, one thing there versus. That.
Okay, now I have a really tiny aesthetic comment, but. One thing you might not want to do is that. The way that you have all these little kind of. Disease like blobs. It just looks like a, it looks like a divided park. It looks like a quilt. I think if we could come up with some aesthetic that's not. So disjointed, I think it would make people feel better. So just a thought.
All right. Would anyone like to comment on the color palette?
No one likes this slide. That's.
I know.
All right.
All right. Sorry. Anyway, that's pretty good. I have a, how many, a hundred and, you know, just one page.
All right. Any further comments?
Thank you.
I think we'll close this item and thank you to Parents for Parks and the public and the council.
Thank you to the parents. Thank you to everyone who did public.
And to the staff, David. And we'll move now to.
Thank you to council and for all those great comments and I'll take those, I've been taking tons of notes. So. When you see it next, I hope that you see your, you see a responsive plan.
Thank you. We move now to item D two, DI two, which is also a discussion item. Thank you for shedding light.
Council members, this item here is a review of encroachment permit nineteen thirty two. That's for the Caprice Restaurant. Valet service and permit number, first time you're hearing this one nineteen oh eight one. This is for the bungalow kitchen. That are using a portion of the public right of way as drop off and pickup for the valet service. The recommendations that we are seeking this evening are that this item's been placed. On the agenda as a discussion item and council may provide feedback and direction to staff on matters discussed. But no formal action is required by council this evening.
I have a, just a quick question. So is this a standard permit application? Or is this something that is completely non-standard? I think that's from a procedural standpoint, you don't bring every permit to town council.
No, we, we're bringing, this one was part of the original permit that was approved was for us to come back to town council.
But I mean, just in general for, for procedurally, not every permit is going to come to town.
No, not, not, not at all. Not every encroachment permit.
Is there a delineation between the type of permits that you, that do come to town council and the type of permits that are approved by town staff?
Let me try to answer that. So tonight we're just, as David will go through his staff report. We came here before with some options about how to deal with the encroachment agreement and parking. That implicated their permit. So we're coming back to you tonight to talk about those implications and get direction of how to proceed. There's, you know, there's a thousand permits to city issues, the town issues, some are discretionary by the, or just are over the counter by the town staff. Some are by the planning commission, some are by DRB, some are by the council. We're not looking for any. Approval tonight. We're just giving you some background on the permit so you can understand. The issues before the valet service.
Right. That part's clear in the staff report. I'm just wondering if you take a step back, permits. Is there a delineation between the type of permits you bring to town council and the type of permits that are approved by planning or?
There's a, it's in our zoning code. Okay. There's a lot of permits that are delineated in our zoning code.
I would, I would like to learn more about.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just a quick his, some history on the Caprice Restaurant. March nineteenth of twenty nineteen, Jerry Del Bosso, who is the owner of the Caprice Restaurant. Submitted in an encroachment permit application to start the valet service at the parking lot there by sanitary district five. On July seventeenth of twenty nineteen, town council approved the encroachment permit application with a set of conditions. Specific set of conditions that the permit holder must adhere to. And as part of the approval, town council also requested to review the permit at a future date to allow the permae to correct any non-compliance issues that would arise. This was in twenty nineteen, but the problem was is as it were in twenty nineteen COVID hit, we're in twenty twenty restaurants, you know, everything was closed, valet service didn't close. So it took a while for the restaurants to open back up and for the valet service to get up and running. And we had to sit there and monitor this valet service and make sure they were adhering to. The encroachment permit and then given them time to make changes to what they were not adhering to. So we did come to back to town council on April third of this year and town council received a presentation from town staff on the valet services. And the Caprice Restaurant Services started again, I said late in twenty twenty one and from the inception of the valet service, both staff. Received complaints about the valet service operating in a manner that was inconsistent with the approved permit conditions. Here we show what was approved, the green. That little area there where it says Caprice on the bottom right hand corner, that's the restaurant. That's a little park in front of sanitary district five. Right there. So that's a drop off pickup zone. The valet service company is in that parking lot. Patrons come, drop off their car and then the attendants would need to drive their cars all the way up to Point Tiburon Plaza, park them there and then come back. So this is the route that was approved for the conditional use. Permit by the planning commission and we're following that and specific in there that that's the route they need to follow. So below are some of the violations again that triggered this review. The vehicles are utilizing, utilizing the valet service are not being parked at the point Tiburon parking lot, but. Rather they're parking several public parking areas near the restaurant, including the Mar West. Paradise Drive parking lot. They're also parking adjacent to the Donahue Building and the Railroad Museum. Parking lot along the public right of way on Mar West adjacent to sanitary district five. Doing so restricts visitors and residents from being able to publicly park to access nearby areas. There are also multiple reports that the public, from the public at the valet service staff have turned away visitors and residents from utilizing the parking lot at. Mar West and Paradise Drive for public parking and also valet staff are not parking vehicles in the designated parking location at Point Tiburon Plaza. The permit holder has acknowledged, you know, their acknowledgement is that they acknowledge that the service is not in, is not operating in accordance with the permit provisions and staff has. Convened multiple meetings. We've met with the owner and the valet company multiple times, tried to correct this to no avail. The permit holder also reports that they have been providing valet service to the public regardless of whether they're patent, patrons of Caprice Restaurant and proposes. Reevaluating the current permit conditions to include this type of service to offer free valet parking to anybody that would like their car parked. Little bit analysis here as part of the follow up work from our April meeting here at town with town council, staff reviewed the conditional use permit. And the, and condition ten states specifically to valet operations and includes the following prohibitions. The value service shall not use any. Not use of any cones or other devices to block off or discourage parking in the public area. Public spaces or any off premise private parking spaces without express permission from the property owner and the valet service shall not park cars. Any public parking spaces and shall confine its parking to the least space at the point Tiburon Plaza. So per Town's Municipal Code, chapter sixteen fifty two point oh four oh, the planning commission is the town body that may grant a conditional use permit for a specific use. Although decisions made by the planning commission can also be appealed by town council. So the appropriate steps for Caprice to take and seeking the ability to utilize public parking spots for. Valet services are as follows. They can submit an application to amend the existing CUP, which would. Be considered by the planning commissions and if the planning commission approves an amendment to the CUP allowing valet parking in public areas. That, and that decision was not appealed, then we would return to town council to amend the encroachment permit accordingly to follow the amended CUP. Or if the planning commission denies the proposed amendment, the applicant could then appeal that decision to town council and then town council will. Can either deny that appeal, upholding the planning commission decision. And any operation, any valet operation would need to conform with the existing CUP and encroachment permit. Or town council can decide to grant the appeal. And overturn the planning commission decision and then staff would return to council with options for modifying the existing encroachment permit. We have discussed this information with Mr. Del Bosso, owner of the Caprice, and he has indicated that he is prepared to submit an application. For amending the existing CUP. Now I'm going to give you a little bit of background on the bungalow kitchen. This is the first time you're hearing this update again on this. For this restaurant, they submitted an encroachment permit January fourth, twenty nineteen. To basically saw permission to use a portion of the public right of way near the Angel Island ferry loading and unloading zone. And that's at the southwest corner of Main Street and Paradise Drive. On July seventeenth, twenty nineteen, town council approved the encroachment permit application again with a set of. Specific conditions that the permit holder must adhere to. And again, as part of that approval, town council also requested to review the permit at a future date to allow the permae. To correct any non-compliance issues that would arise once the valet service started. Here we show the route that was approved originally. This right here is a drop off pickup zone right before the roundabout, right next door to the Cree Restaurant. Cafe. So patrons drop their cars, they come around the roundabout and they go and park their cars behind the old Bank of America building. And then they'd have to come right back down that way to drop off car back to the patrons when they're about to leave. So this is the route those approved by the planning commission. Or town council, but it's part of the planning commission CUP. This right here shows a close up. Close up. Aerial of, of the valet drop off pickup zone, but what bungalow kitchen has done, they've also leased some additional private parking spaces from Point Tiburon. Up here. So it makes it easier for their valet service to pick up and drop off cargo around the roundabout and drop them off at the private lot. So. That, that helped them as far as time goes when between pickup and drop off of vehicles. So the bungalow kitchen valet, again, it started late in twenty twenty one from the inception of the valet service against staff has worked with both the permit holder and the valet service to provide. And the provider to improve the valet drop off pickup location. Below again are a list of violations that we observed since they started. The vehicles are utilizing the valet. Service are not moved to the designated private parking areas and left in the loading, unloading zone. So they're leaving the vehicles there. Some of the vehicles are double parked on the loading and unloading zone and blocking the bicycle lanes. And vehicles parked in the public parking spots on. And vehicles parked in the public parking spots on Tiburon Boulevard. Not in those private spaces, they find any any public parking spot on Tiburon Boulevard. The town staff has met with the uh, permit holder and valet service provider several times and most recently in April of this year to discuss the violations. The permit holder and the valet service provider acknowledged the violations again and um, have made efforts to ensure the valet operations are consistent with permit requirements. And again, Tiburon Police Department and town staff, we will continue to monitor the valet operations at the bungalow kitchen to make sure they adhere and park the vehicles in the private lots. So tonight we're just here to uh, we place this item again on the agenda for a discussion item. Council may provide feedback and direction to staff uh, on the matters discussed, but no formal action is required by council. And just to reiterate for the Caprice Restaurant, uh, the owner will be submitting an application to uh, the planning department uh, to try to amend their existing CUP uh, to allow them to park in other areas except, you know, besides being restricted to uh, park the valeted cars at Point Tiburon. And uh, we're available to answer any questions at this time.
Are there any questions or actually this is a discussion too, right?
Yes.
Yes, Holly, I'm sorry.
Oh, 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 wait, oh, go second.
Who's going first?
I have nothing to say, there's no recommendation, I'm just, I just absorb the information and ready to move on.
Okay, okay, Holly, did you?
Yeah, you know, I I wanna thank you for the report. Um, it looks to me uh, from the staff report and from what you've said is that we have uh, two businesses in town who um, are trying to comply with their CUP permits, that they're cooperating with the town, is that right? Um, I think Mr. Dal- Dalbozo actually came to one of our meetings and had different ideas and uh, seemed very much like he, they were trying to comply. Uh, in addition, uh, your staff report says that uh, you know, bungalow kitchen also is trying to comply with their permit and has actually leased uh, paid for space to put the cars. So I I think that um, you guys are doing your job and everything seems to be going in the direction uh, that it should.
Um, so I I actually um, um, have um, some questions. Um, starting with the Caprice, the place that they permanently park is quite a distance uh, from where the cars pull up. Um, and it seems to me, um, even though they make the argument that if they were not valeting, the customers would probably park in these public spaces on their own. Um, they do need a permit to have the valet service. We don't have any way to compel them, but it seems to me, given the long distances, that they have to travel to drop off and pick up the car, what they really need is more staff, is that a suggestion we are in a position to make?
The, we have talked about them uh, having more staff. But uh, with the restaurant business, there are some days where they only valet ten cars and there are some days where they valet fifty cars and for the valet service to operate and be profitable. Um, their answer to us was that if they have the same amount of uh, valet attendance out there, um, they'll have some just standing there and not working on the slow days, so it's very unpredictable was their answer for us. And that uh, what they need is uh, to go back to the planning commission to see if there's any other way where they could make it easier for them to park in other locations that would be approved.
We, and I guess the ask is for the use of public space.
Correct.
And and then with respect to the bungalow uh, kitchen proposal, which which looks um, as though it's a good attempt at a solution. Would this solution be uh, long term or is there a trial period? That somehow would just look at whether they're able to operate uh, without violating the new terms of their conditional use permit.
I'm just gonna jump in real quick if you don't mind. Um, yeah, I mean, I think we have two um, significantly different situations here, y- you know, with the Caprice, it's it's virtually impossible for them to comply w- with the the requirement that they valet cars at Point Tiburon because of the distance you mentioned. Um, and I'll think, I, you know, although I think they've made some effort to comply, you know, they've they've come to the conclusion that they eh, they need a fundamentally different way to do it and what we're saying is the appropriate path for them is to try to amend their CUP um, at the planning commission, because the current CUP simply doesn't allow it. Um, bungalow kitchen's a little bit different, there, I think their operation is probably easier to achieve success. Um, given the distance from where the valets picks up and drops off to where they need to bring the cars, particularly given that they've now secured some spots at Point Tiburon, which is much closer than Bank of America. The issues we're having with bungalow kitchen are more just um, day-to-day compliance and and we just need to be communicating with them and reminding them of their responsibilities. Um, you know, the, I think staff believes that they are, they can meet the requirements of the encroachment permit much easier than um, the encroachment permit for the Caprice, if that makes sense.
Right, but but this is more of a planning issue and then police enforcement, so I don't know what direction you're seeking from the council.
Um, we're really not, you know, the
But let me, let me
I'm sorry.
Because uh, I think what what uh, council member Isaac was getting at is that this is not the type of issue that would come to us unless it's an appeal or unless something else is going on. Um, it looks like we have two businesses that are trying to comply. Uh, one is gonna get it, go back for revised CUP and it looks like staff is working with them, but I just don't know that this is something that we would you know, normally hear. So I guess that was the question, so we're trying to figure out what input you're seeking from the council.
Well, the reason we're here is there a requirement of the permit is to come back to you and provide an update.
But that would be the permit for the Caprice.
So both, both, uh, both permits, uh, both encroachment permits had a uh, provision that we would come back to council and give you an update as to how things were.
Okay, and that would have been in a year, so that would have been twenty twenty, which was COVID, so now it's twenty twenty-four. Okay, that's fine, I just wanna make sure um, that we're on the same page and we know what what you're seeking.
This is our second update.
It is, it is our second update too, so that's why it's a little uh,
Well, you you also say, at the first update, there were some issues that came up with the permit.
Yes.
And whether we should be encouraging them to go this route of changing
No, I I
Didn't know what the permit said, frankly.
Yeah, I I remember.
So I think the purpose of tonight's update is to all let you know where this is heading. So you're not caught off guard if there's an appeal at some point about their their encroachment permit.
Oh, okay, and I, I again, I think that, you know, it's something that um, you know, ma- maybe, maybe a memo would have been, would have been uh, because it's it's unclear what what, because we can't change the CUP. And um, it looks like staff is is doing the right thing here as our our police department.
And and I appreciate the opportunity for us to share any brilliant week ideas
Right.
and simple solutions, so I was glad for the update, thank you very much. Any further comments?
Yeah, I wasn't glad.
Uh, let's move now to the
A public comment, Madam Mayor.
Uh, what?
You must, uh, public comment on this item?
I was trying to say it, but yes, public comment, please. I'm seeing, are you gonna make a comment on the parking?
We also have one member, we have one person online as well, Madam Mayor.
Um, so I'm not totally sure that the town is actually doing its job as part of the whole kitchen component. Which is number one.
Thank you, okay. So uh, can we start at three again? There's nobody else in here.
Actually, the council and the staff is here.
Come again, Alice. Oh, wait, wait, so quite, don't worry about it. Um, I I was not totally sure that the town was correctly doing their job because neither of the reviews that they were calling for uh, were done in the appropriate amount of time, as all of you know. You know, the Caprice review wasn't taken for almost eight hundred days. And the uh, if this is considered the review for um, uh, bungalow kitchen, it's up to a thousand days and but um, all of you know what the violations are, the violations continue or continuing and in fact it is considered by those of us who are working and using the properties down there that it's getting worse, the parker parking violations are getting worse. Basically, the problem is the lineal park that is the shoreline park that is right down there has rights and deeded rights that have been given to it um, along with its creation is the shoreline park and the valet services are trying to take the parking that was supposed to be prescribed for public parking uh, to uh, use for themselves and they're using, they're not using it for the time period that is allotted, which is one hour for the Donahue Building and one hour for the public, they're 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 allowing their employees, the Caprices, to park in there for several hours and they're also using their patrons to park in there for several hours. Um, and as you know, BCDC said that we can create this park, you're allowed to create this park, but you must pull in, you must allow for thirty-two public parking spaces, well, there aren't thirty-two places in the first place. But the few that are there are being abused by both of these two restaurants, so my suggestion is, I know that you wanna think of something harmonious. All of us would like to think of something harmonious because we want to encourage the businesses, of course, to help them work properly and work along properly. But we also want to allow the citizens, not only our own townspeople, but anyone else, to be able to come and use the shoreline park, which they wanna do and have, you know, a place to park. So what I'd like to you guys to consider is to make a valet ordinance. And similar to the one that is been put together by Sausalito, because they had complaints also and they put together a valet ordinance and it's worthwhile looking at, I think it's been uh, shared with you on different occasions by several other people that um, are concerned about this issue, so I'd like you to do that. The other thing I would like you to do, consider doing is to have host review this issue, study the parking and then come back to the planning commission with a recommendation that can be given to the town council to approve. But uh, the violations are continuing and I would really love to have you uh, consider and take care of them, thank you so much.
Any further public comment?
We have one uh, person online.
Thank you.
Hey, town council, um, I'd uh, like to second the uh, the words of the preceding speaker, which were very uh, eloquent and sort of stole my thunder, to be honest, so I don't have that much to say. But um, nice work. Um, I really don't think that the town council has a good grasp of the issues here or your own responsibilities. And um, I mean, that's not your fault, but um, I just don't think you guys have given this thing a fair shake and um, it's not your fault, you guys have a lot on your plate, this is come back to you because of a direction from the town council in two thousand nineteen to the council, uh, staff, so, but it was a long time ago. So I'm not gonna go over any of the details, um, I'll address them in writing later, but for now, I'll second the uh, post commission. Um, uh, saying, ask them for recommendation on the used to shoreline park regarding, um, well, first the public's need for parking down there and the Caprice um, valet parking down there. Um, I have a few questions, can you ask David issue, how many hours have staff spent on administering the bungalow and Caprice valet permits? Um, outside of preparing like the staff report for tonight. And then I'd also would like you to ask David um, any data or estimate on the impact on the public of the Caprice and bungalow kitchens uh, use of public parking spaces um, over the past three years, like how many spaces do you guys think they've taken total? And then can you ask um, Ray Chanis, our town manager Chanis, or David? Um, what was the compliance strategy? And how has it evolved for both of these? What, can you tell us how it, what the general idea is? And how you use these reviews as part of that strategy? And um, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, is there any further public comment? All right, bring it back to council for any remarks. I am seeing none. Um, we don't look forward uh, to seeing this again, but I'm sure we will at some point. We move now to public hearings. Uh, the current public hearing is for the Tiburon Tourism Business Improvement District.
Uh, excuse me, very briefly, uh, council, uh, this is the second step in the process for re um, authorizing the Tiburon um, Tourism Business Improvement District uh, uh, fee or tax that's charged on the hotels here in Tiburon. Um, the uh, the Tiburon 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 Tourism Improvement District was formed um, uh, many years ago and each year the council has to uh, re-up or reallocate or reauthorize the tax being charged uh, to the hotels. On June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, the advisory board for the TTBID approved the annual report um, which details uh, past information, the past year's activities and predicts sort of revenues and expenditures for the future year. Copy of that report is attached to the to the staff report as exhibit one. On August seventh, twenty twenty-four, the town council adopted resolution number twenty-five, twenty twenty-four uh, which declared its intention to levy and collect the assessment uh, for the bid and to use those assessments to fund the bid program. Um, and at that meeting, you set the public hearing uh, for the second step for this evening. Um, as part of that, as part of the process, we send out notices to the affected businesses and see if there are any protests as of today. Uh, the town has not received any protests from either of the hotels. So um, the action tonight is to adopt a resolution which would authorize uh, the tax to be collected for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
Are there any council questions? I'm seeing none, is there any public comment?
None online.
Uh, so I bring it back to uh, the council for any discussion or for a motion uh, to adopt the resolution to continue the assessments.
So moved.
Second up.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
We move now quickly to town council reports, I have a very short one. Uh, Lori Nelson of PD is assembling the get ready event crew again, and we are planning a townwide get ready event in Zelinski Plaza for October nineteenth. Any town manager reports?
No, Madam Mayor.
Regretfully, we adjourn. You're welcome.